Who out there knows the Pledge of Allegiance? Raise your hand. We're gonna make it. I'm gonna ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. What's your name?
George Jan.
George Jan, got it. You're gonna be our leader. Hey, we ready to go? We just got a minute yet. No, 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 just we got... I appreciate your patriotism, though. This is good. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for November 4th, 2019. Kathleen, could we get a roll call and see who's here?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Here.
Chair Earring?
Here.
You have a call.
All right, very good. Pledge of Allegiance. George Jan, if you would lead us in the pledge, we appreciate that.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Thank you very, very much. Approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 3B continued to a date uncertain and item 5D continued to a date uncertain.
Is it 4B?
4B and 5D.
Okay, perfect.
Can I get a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done, okay.
Is there something weird about the sound today, tonight?
Yes.
Can we... Can everybody hear out there?
Thought it was just my hearing.
Can you hear out there, okay?
Yeah, I wondered that too, but I was notified it was okay.
It's like we're getting monitors back at us.
As long as the audience can hear us.
As long as the audience can hear us, I think we'll have to plug our way through this thing. Okay. A report on posting the agenda, Kathleen, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 25th, 2019.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, well, the first item of evening is the election of the new chair and vice chair. And before we get there, I just want to say thank all my fellow commissioners and the staff for the time I've been doing this. It has, you guys have made it very good. I mean, you guys have covered me when I wandered off someplace, so I thank you very, very much for that. That said, I would like to make the first nomination for chair, and I would like to nominate Jeff Jennings.
I'll second that.
I'll let John second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? If none, nominations are closed. All in favor of electing Commissioner Jennings as chair for the upcoming term, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Jeff, you're in. So with that, we're gonna keep the chairs here based upon the instructions Kathleen has given me, and I'm gonna hand the gavel down to Jeff so he can run it from down there. You're good.
Up your microphone.
On his tenure as chair, had some extremely challenging meetings and historically challenging meetings to have to deal with, and he carried them off smoothly with good humor and aplomb.
Thank you.
So congratulations for your, all your hard work.
Thank you.
And so the nominations for vice chair are now open. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate John Mazza.
I'll second it. Are there any other nominations? All nominations are closed. All in favor of electing John Mazza as vice chair, say aye.
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 He, John Mazza is our vice chair. Congratulations, John.
Very good, congratulations, guys. Excellent.
Okay, now we got a staff update on the Woolsey Fire rebuild process. Richard?
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I'll give you a brief update on where we are with the rebuild efforts. To date, we've got 56 applications that we've approved for like-for-like, or excuse me, that we've processed for like-for-like rebuilds, 102 applications where folks are adding either square footage or increases in height, or both, and then 12 applications, which is what you've been seeing for the last couple of weeks, where the applicant is now doing something drastically different that kicks them out of the rebuild category and into more of new development. What you'll see here in this chart is one of the items that you've requested a couple of meetings ago. What you see there of a barometer or thermometer, the solid blue are the number of primary residences that we've approved, and towards the top, there is the target. 473 homes were destroyed in the fire, and that's the number that was provided to us and we're using, and so far, we've approved 170 residences, 25 second units, and 96 accessory structures. Another question that was posed by the commission was kind of the trend. Where are we in terms of the volume of applications coming through the door? So what you're seeing in this particular graph, these are all fire-related applications. So these could be barns, garages, fences, single-family houses, or second units. This chart represents a combination of planning verification applications and administrative plan review applications. And as you can see, it picked up drastically in the April or marched through May timeframe, and it slowed down a little in summer, came up, peaked again, and then went down, and we're on a trend of going up in terms of applications. We've been implementing the fee waiver program. We're getting close to a million dollars in fees waived. These are fees that are citywide, so this would be the fees for the planning department as well as the environmental services department. That includes public, or excuse me, that includes geology and environmental health and building permit fees. And the stats for the building and safety division is that they've got 78 applications that are getting prepared for building plan check submittal. These are for primary residences. They have 60 projects that are in the plan check phase, and 32 that have been approved and permits have been issued, and those 32 are under construction. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you for the time series. Two comments on that. It would be great to see something like that showing approvals relative to applications so we can get a sense of what the progress is in actual approvals and acknowledging that it's low now, but hopefully it'll go up. And if, assuming you might redo it to do it as a bar graph rather than a curve because the curve is sort of misleading. They're discreet months, right? So it would just be individual bars, that's all.
John?
Richard, we're now, as of a couple of days ago, into the no grading season. How does that affect removal and recompaction and the other stuff that needs to be done on rebuilds?
There is an exemption in the local cost of program. I believe it actually says at the discretion of the planning director, but it's really, we work with building and safety. They're a bit more of an expert on this than us. But where it can be demonstrated that the grading can be done without a hazard or threatening sensitive habitat area, essentially, is erosion control. If you're grading on a relatively flat pad, there, you can put devices in place to keep any sort of sediment runoff or any dirt that's tracked offsite onsite. If you can control your site, folks can still grade during the rainy season.
And just a quick rough observation with about 300-something apps. It looked like if we average 40 a month, it would be optimistically eight to 10 months, theoretically, that we could kind of get through this backlog, just on a rough back of the envelope, in terms of the applicants through if they stay on this path, on this track.
We, yes, and you are correct, and I think the speed is picking up because, for one, we've, have better communication right now with the fire department. We've implemented a program where we have been checking in with them, both the planning department to help folks through the planning phase, and also, the building and safety department has been providing the fire department with a spreadsheet of projects that are in their queue, and we're trying to move those through.
Thank you.
Just one last one, Richard. The applicants or the people who got burnt out have to apply to the city to avoid the payments of the permits. Are we communicating, I mean, are we sending, I'm just surprised more haven't come through already because that seems to be, and if you're looking to save some bucks, that's one way to do it. Are we communicating with those people? How are we doing that?
When a applicant comes to City Hall, we've been checking to see if they qualify, and if they do, we notify them of that. Or if it's not the homeowner, we tell the applicant that the homeowner, or their representative, sorry, because the homeowner could be the applicant. We, so we actively look to see if somebody qualifies, and if we can apply it, we are doing it.
Also, I would just add a comment that the city has been trying to be very proactive about trying to understand what is preventing people from applying or getting through the planning process and then not taking the next step to get into plan check or get out of plan check, and so we've been making a lot of direct phone calls to people to just find out what can we do to help you, what are the roadblocks that you're facing, and so that, that process is ongoing.
I think it's, I mean, you know, and again, I'm, I sort of meet people on the streets, so my information is not anywhere signed, but I mean, people are struggling trying to figure out how they do all this stuff, so anything we can do to help them, I think would be good.
Yeah, Bonnie, we had a letter that came in just today, I think, and there was some confusion about, about the cutoff, and let me put it this way. I understand that the fee, in order to obtain the fee waiver for a planning verification of like-for-like or 110%, you have to apply with, by November, you have to, you submit, rather, by November of 2020, correct? And if you go beyond that date, can you still get the benefits of the planning verification process, planning verification plus 10%, or, or does that go away as well? Because that was sort of what the letter writer seemed to be concerned about.
So the, there is a cutoff for taking advantage of being able to rebuild your, anything that's legal nonconforming without having to go through the normal process, which would include either adjusting your project to comply or requesting a variance or a site plan review or whatever might be necessary. So there is a hard cutoff for that that's built into the code amendments that the council made last year, or well, it was completed early this year. There is an extension process that's available for property owners that have run into extraordinary circumstances or something unusual that they can't control that, I mean, with the caveat that we understand that this, the whole process is overwhelming and we understand that this is difficult, but anyhow, there is an extension process for that time period if a property owner needs more time, and the extensions would be considered by the planning commission.
Just in terms, it's purely anecdotal, but in terms of explaining why people haven't applied, in my own case, trying to figure out a budget for the process, trying to figure out how much it's going to cost, you're almost at the point where you think, I gotta build it in order to find out how much it's gonna cost. Somebody had a line the other day at a, at a meeting, said, "Well, you get three bids and then add them up."
I hope that's not the way it goes.
Written and oral communications from the public, are there any slips down there? Nothing, all right. Keep turning this thing on and off. Planning Commission and staff comments and inquiries, commissioners? Hill?
Yeah, this is probably a stupid question that I could have asked sooner, but we have a number of items that deal with future dedications of seepage pits, and I just wondered if I could have a quick explanation of that in the abstract rather than on any given project. How, why do we dedicate for the future?
I believe it is so that there is redundancy built into the system, and so there is a place for if one pit fails or it becomes obsolete, then there's a, an alternative.
And that's just normal practice?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, I wanted to make an observation about the Maria fire. I stayed up and watched the coverage of that and was, had my eyes glued on the Twitter feed from the ham radio operators out there, and there were two periods of over two hours each over the course of the night where somebody had a drone up in the sky, so like four hours total, during which time, at least four water-dropping aircraft could not fly, they were all grounded. So had that drone not been there, they may well have had that thing under control by morning. I mean, who knows exactly, but it definitely made a big difference that they weren't able to fly that night. And just thinking about how that could happen in Malibu, a lot of people with drones here, a lot of people wanting to get great shots of the fire, I think what we need is some kind of education campaign about the penalties involved, whatever they may be, I don't know. I spoke to Susan Duainius today about it, and she agreed that it was a big deal and that we should be working up the details and talking to the sheriff and figuring out exactly what we can do about it and what the consequences are for somebody that does do that, and then hit it hard and often in terms of reminding people that this is just not something we want to do, because it might be really cool and really fun and, you know, if you had a drone, you'd be tempted, but if we're, you know, if we're grounding aircraft for your fun, that's not good. So to be continued. Thank you.
Comment on that is the military does have drone killers, and every airport, major airport, has drone killers. I would think the city would ask the fire department, why don't they get some? They're fairly common. This, basically, this weekend is the anniversary of the fire, and when I, I live on Point Doom, and Wednesday night, they shut the power off. Wasn't much wind, but they shut the power off and, and all the lights were out, and it was really dark, and it was a very dangerous situation driving on Coast Highway because nobody was stopping at all. They were going 60 miles an hour through the lights. So that's one thing I think we, we need to get on. The other thing is, it's a year, and there is no evacuation plan, and I think that's really, really sad, that the city can't come up with an evacuation plan by the time there's the next fire season. So hopefully, somebody does it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just kind of playing on the theme of the fire observations. I don't know if anyone realized, but apparently, on late Friday night was our, that I know of, our first camping fire turned into a fire event. Apparently, they had to have helicopters coming and everything. It was over there, kind of up towards where the 23 hits Malibu, I'm sorry, Mahaland Drive, I believe. So just another observation, the concept of camping and camp fires is not good for the community, and that was obviously a stressful, at least, week last week with the threat of fires and the power outages, so just one more on the stack of trouble.
Okay. Along that same theme, it is the anniversary, and there are gonna be a lot of events going on around town. I know one that I did want to mention, there is a commemoration that will take place at the Malibu Jewish Center beginning tomorrow. I think it's from 5:00 to 9:00. Basically, photographs of fire scenes, or actually, not the scenes, but the results of the fire by Eric Meyer, who was an internationally recognized photographer. So that's at the Malibu Jewish Center tomorrow from, I think, believe, 5:00 to 9:00, and then the next day from 1:00 to 8:00, I believe, is an additional showing. Yeah, the idea about the evacuation plan, when the lights went out, this is not within our jurisdiction, but something that drives me crazy. When the lights went out, every once in a while, you'll see a sheriff out of the car directing traffic, and it's amazing what a benefit it is to moving things along. And in this event, back in the fire, the event this last weekend, back when in the fire, back in the, when the lights went out two or three weeks before the fire, not one person directing traffic anywhere from the length of Malibu, and it, it was a major contribution to the, to the danger of the lack of evacuation plan. I don't know whether there's something in their union contract that says they don't have to get out of their cars or what it is, but it's not our business, but it just drives me crazy.
Jeff, I think you're absolutely correct. I mean, and I think whether it's the sheriffs or volunteers, somebody has to be, I mean, I'm within, I feel, I had this conversation with my wife, I feel like I'm living like in a third world country. I mean, the wind blows and electricity goes off. So, but I agree. I mean, we gotta find some way to get somebody out there when this, when that happens to make sure we're not killing ourselves on the road, so. Any help I can give you doing that, I would more than happy to do.
Maybe we ought to have yellow vests in our cars like the French do, and we could all get out and wave flashlights. Bonnie, your comments?
Good evening, everybody. Just a few quick comments. On Saturday, on November 11th, the city will be hosting an event commemorating the one-year anniversary of the Woolsey Fire. Let's see. The event will be held at Zuma Beach Lot 8 in Malibu from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It will feature a poetry reading by the Malibu poet laureate Ellen Reich, and musical performances, comments from community members, special giveaways, refreshments provided by the Paradise Cove Beach Cafe. Everybody's welcome to attend, there's no RSVP needed, so I encourage everybody to, to stop by. On, in terms of a few upcoming planning things, planning-related things, tomorrow evening, Tuesday, November 5th at 5:30, there will be a workshop on firescaping here at City Hall, and then some upcoming planning projects. On November 18th, the November 18th regular planning commission meeting, the La Paz project will be before the planning commission, and also, the fire-resistant landscape ordinance that Zerace is considered a couple of weeks ago, that'll be before the planning commission. And then on December 3rd, this is a Tuesday, the city council will be holding a special meeting for consideration of the short-term rental ordinance. That's based on some direction the council gave at their last meeting for staff to return with an ordinance as soon as possible, and the council has agreed to have this special meeting in order to accomplish that, and then we'll be returning later with an ordinance similar to what the city of Santa Monica has been implementing regarding short-term rentals. And that, actually, at this time also, I would like to introduce the city's new building official, Environmental Sustainability Director, Yolanda Bundy, has just started with the city. She's gonna be helping us out with one of our items later tonight, but we're very happy to have her, and I hope you'll all introduce yourselves and get to know her. And that's all I have.
Well, welcome, Yolanda. Your reputation precedes you, and we're very glad to have you here.
I'm surprised Ventura let her go.
John?
Bonnie, on Sat, is it Saturday the event is?
Right, yes.
Is there any parking?
The parking will be at Zuma.
So you pay to get in?
I don't know the answer to that. There was nothing on the city's website about having to pay to park, so.
So which tower is it, did you say?
It's, it's Lot 8 between Morning View and Guernsey.
Okay, that's a lot.
That's a, yeah. That's not that helpful, but, yeah.
On the short-term rental ordinance, the one that we heard in 2018, if it's changed, does it come back to us?
At this point, it, it's going straight to the plant, to the city council.
Okay.
Just one quick, accessory dwelling units, is that anywhere in our future?
Yes. I was hoping to have it come back to you before the end of the year. I don't think that's gonna be possible, but it will be early 2020, although there have been some changes to state regulations, so if, if it's required that we get it to you before then, we will move things around and get it to you.
Thank you.
Can you confirm the date? I wrote down November 11th for the Woolsey event. What's the date on that one again?
November 9th, Saturday the 9th.
9th, Saturday, thank you.
Yep. Incidentally, November 11th is Veterans Day, and so City Hall will be closed on that Monday, and so I think it's a council meeting that will be moved to Tuesday, the 12th.
Okay, so we're now at the consent calendar. Are there any items that the commissioners wish to pull from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 3B2 and 3B4.
All right, hold on just a second. 3B2, 3B4. Any others? Yeah. Yeah, all right, so 3B1. I'm gonna pull 3B1. I'm sorry, 3A1, but we're not gonna rehear this. This is, this is a matter that comes back in front of us. The only issue is whether the, the resolution that staff has brought to us is consistent with what we asked them to do, and we heard this extensively, so I'm, I don't want to go through the whole thing again. We've read your letters, we got the information that, that you've given to us, and this is simply a question now for the council to, to consider, and for that purpose, I'm not gonna ask for a staff report on this, but Bonnie, and Trevor, if I'm too abrupt on my procedure here, let me know, but my, my feeling is this is simply a question of, of legal interpretation, and, and I'm asking you to give us your opinion on it.
No, you, you hit the nail on the head. The issue here is whether the resolution correctly reflects what happened last time, and then whether the, there's a report that the calculation was performed correctly under the building code, so if there's comments about how the calculation was performed, that would be appropriate, but otherwise, this is not a reopening of the hearing.
I think the real issue that came up in the letters was the, the question of which code we're supposed to be talking about. The, the first letter from the opponents indicated that, that, that while, well, while the building code itself was not explicit in terms of whether garages should be excluded, there was a provision in the zoning code which, which did indicate that garages should be excluded. Then the, the applicant came back with a letter pointing out that that was a planning code and not a, a planning and zoning code and not a building code, and, and that the building code itself contains no explicit removal of garages and others from the calculation. So this is not, you know, this is a lawyer's question that I'm not getting paid to answer, and you are, and so I'm, if, I'm gonna ask you whether you, in your opinion, the calculation or the determination by staff was correct, that, that the calculation was done correctly.
My reading is that it was. We also have Yolanda here to opine on it. She's an expert on the building code itself, so if you want to have her weigh in as well, you're welcome to.
Okay, staff?
Good evening, commissioners. I was asked to be of support for the planning department and this issue. The calculation was that correctly, and there is actually state, it's by the California Building Code 2016. The sections, as you guys know, for the 25%, it's a section, Building Code Section 110.2, .3, .4, which states of the total gross area. The gross area is defined on the building code under Chapter 2. This one, it is interpreted as a, on building and safety, as a total area within the structure. So it includes habitable and unhabitable areas.
Okay. Questions? Yeah.
Because the garage is in, right?
So. This is questions for staff or comments on the?
Questions for staff or comments.
Okay. What, what I think we're missing is that this, the city code calls out the LA County Code for, to incorporate it by reference, and the phrase in that, that, that the parties did not include at the time was that gross floor area of the structure by more than 25% of the area of the structure as it existed on July 6, 1968. That's the piece that the city staff has not recognized in the code as it existed, and so this weekend, somebody's pulled up the, the permit on base and shown that the square footage as of 1966, when the property was built, was 2568. And what comes out of that is that whether or not you include, well, let me finish that thought. you include, well, let me finish that thought. It's the county code, when you're on the county website, as I did today, and you click to search for gross floor area for a definition, it takes you, it drops you into the county planning code. The applicant's argument is that's the planning code, not the building code, but, and they say you need to use the California State Building Code, but this is county code. So, we should be using a county definition of gross floor area. So, that would be point one. Point two, even if you, whether you exclude or include the garage, if you're starting from that original 2568 in 1966, as per the 1968 clause in the county code, you, the house is already there. So, what effectively happened is that when the previous approval was done in, I don't know, 2005, 2007, they should have recognized that at that point, the city staff should have recognized it at that point. And so, the argument on the opponent's side here would be, two wrongs don't make a right, that they already got the 25% additional a decade ago or more, and so, they don't, they don't get another bite at the apple that way. I guess the applicant's alternative would be that, or argument would be that the city is stopped from that interpretation because of the mistake the city made 12 years ago or whenever it was. Does that make sense? You following that?
I do follow you, yeah. I'm just trying to figure out where we can go from here. Trevor, the, what we did at the last hearing was to, was to approve the project, subject to staff determination that the calculation was made correctly. Now, we have a commissioner, at least one, who feels that there is some question as to whether that was done. I'm trying to figure out what path there might be to, I mean, we could send it back to staff again. Staff's already told us what their opinion is, so that doesn't seem to make much sense. I guess the motion would have to be to, to vacate the order that we made previously and to bring it back as a, as a matter again. Would that be the appropriate procedural way to deal with it?
If you disagree that staff has performance calculation correctly, you could either ask for further clarification. You could continue it again. That would be an option for you if you want additional support for this from staff. Alternatively, you would, you would then, you'd let the applicant know that your interpretation is that the, the project would need to be smaller in size, and that they had the option to come back with adjustments to the project, or you could rule on, on their request and then let them appeal it to the council.
Okay. So, I don't want to continue to try this thing by email, and I don't want to have unlimited hearings on it as well. So, Craig, having heard what Trevor has to say, have you got a motion that you want to make? Or, John, do you have a comment that you want to make?
Do you have to hear more from the other commissioners?
Okay. John?
Well, I think Greg makes a valid point. It makes total sense to me that you don't get two bites at the apple. So, obviously, staff did not consider that in their replies to us, the two 25%. So, I think we have to either get an answer from staff why that is incorrect right now, or send it back for a determination that includes the 2005 building being included in that 20, 25%.
I do think, what I'd like to hear from staff, their response to what Commissioner Hill came up with. And the applicant is here. I don't know if you want to hear from him in terms, I don't know if they've got, they've got information that may be meaningful, but they're raising their hands out there.
We got it. We got to hear everybody.
So, I don't know how you want to do that. Just, yeah, I'm, but I would, I would like to hear from staff what you think of...
Right. And I don't know whether staff is prepared to respond immediately to Mr. Commissioner Hill's comments. If you are, fine.
We are. I would, can we call the applicant as well? He's done a further analysis on the 1966 permit that he provided. He'd be able to share as well.
The, the sound level is giving my hearing aids problems. You're going to have to say it more clearly.
Sorry. I was going to see if we can bring the applicant up as well to give further clarification on that point, on the 1966 permit.
Okay, applicant come up, then, then the opponents have to come up, and we're going to be spending a lot of time. We have a very full agenda tonight.
Can you give us a summary of what the applicant analyzed?
Certainly. So, I think the 2,568 square feet did not include the garage per the applicant's calculation. The, there would have been additional, I don't have the calculation in front of me, I believe it's 522 square feet. There would have been additional for the garage that was not included in the time of the county permit, which I did clarify as well with Yolanda, that that typically at the time would not have included the non-habitable area of the garage. It would have just been calculated for the habitable space of the 2,568 square feet.
And I think it's also important to note that the, the building permit applications at that time were completed by the applicant. So, the applicant filled out the square footages and everything. So, as far as, so it wouldn't have been a county staff person that completed that part.
Question?
Just a, just a quick one. So, just to run the math you just gave. So, you were saying that they had, assuming that the numbers are right, it was 2568, 2561 plus 562 for the garage, I think you said? So, and then, if we do a 1.25 on that, we're at 3903.
522.
Okay. So, okay, so a little lower than that, 38 something. So, that sounds like we need to ask for a redesign. There's no way this could go through as it is. I mean, just to state the obvious before we get too far.
They'd be at 3210 max total, and they're already past that.
Right. That's my point. But go ahead, John.
Well, my question without having all these numbers is, did they build again on that property in 2000, what was it, five? Five or six?
They did not construct at that time.
Okay, now, I need a kind of an explanation. The average garage back then was no more than 400. So, these guys just decided to have a giant garage? Or that, that's just theory?
That's what the square footage calculation showed on the plans.
We don't have that plan though, do we?
It was included in the correspondence submitted by the applicant this afternoon.
But that's a recreation of a plan, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Jennings, if the public wants to comment about the calculation, that would be appropriate in terms of whether there was...
Again?
If the public had comments strictly about this interpretation, then that would be appropriate for them to comment about here, if we're not reopening the project itself.
Okay. Those of you who are down the calendar, here we go. Joe Drummond, Georgianne Bartelak, you hear?
Yes.
Okay, Joe Drummond. Four minutes, but we're going to, yes, come on up. I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Do I have to go first?
Yep.
Can I respond briefly to something?
Okay.
Bonnie said?
Sure.
You pointed out that the calculations of the square foot were put in by the applicant, but I don't know that that's relevant because, or material, I should say, because those plans are ratified by an official. So, I don't know that that's an issue.
You understand that we're simply talking about the calculations and nothing else, right?
Right.
Okay, so go. Four minutes.
You obviously read our letter. Thank you very much. In July of 2018, when I received this, the, a yellow card like this, it stated an existing square footage of the 20238 Pidjichka as 3453, that we knew was not correct. Several neighbors went to the city planning together to request the original building permit and plans of the house on Lot 9 at 20238 Pidjichka. We were told they were unavailable by Jessica Thompson and Carlos Contreras, and that everything had been checked over. They were also unavailable at the time on, on base. It is not exactly the easiest thing, place to find anything there, anyway.
Speak up, Joe.
Oh, sorry. Not a public speaker. I'm an emailer, though. Only this last week, we discovered the final building permit dated October 16, 1966, stating the square footage of 2568. We do have, Colin will bring up a slide of it. We officially request that the actual architectural plans and surveys of the original house for this permit be located and distributed to ourselves and the planning department to determine for the record if the garage has been included in the listed square footage. Regardless, based on the Los Angeles Building and Planning Codes, the project cannot move forward as the addition is over the size allowable based on 2568 square feet, as you guys just reminded. The opposition to this project has been repeatedly cited by the Los Angeles Building Code 110.2, .3, .4, as adopted by City of Malibu by city staff with regards to this project, most recently via the two memos dated October 23, 2019, to Jessica Thompson from Yolanda Bundy and Christine, and also in person at a meeting with Richard Malika, Jessica Thompson and Yolanda Bundy, with myself and Colin on October 30, 2019. This is the code adopted by Malibu and applied as per the memo from Christine when in the area of, when in an area of a geotechnical hazard such as Big Rock. It is crystal clear that no other code is referred to. It again clearly states that for additions to an existing structure, and such work does not increase the gross floor area of the structure by 25% of the area of the structure as it existed on July 6, 1968. Even if the garage is not included, you already did your calculations, the, it would be 642 a square foot additional out. I'm not going to do math. The plans, the applicants, the current plans the applicants are using are 3,078, incidentally completed by a non-Malibu local architect, which indicates the garage based on the measurement from the latest update, May 8, 2018, is, I believe, 332. Chris, Chris, 335 square feet. The only plans or building permits that can be used for geological hazardous areas must be for the home as of July 6, 1968. No other plans. The 2005 Building Department approval plans expired after two years and should actually not even be referred to for anything. All the geological testing, et cetera, at the time should not, should also be irrelevant and expired. Therefore, we're not talking about, but new testing would be required. We appreciate, all the other stuff I wanted to say, I can't say. So, we appreciate all your time and consideration you have been forced to deal with on this project, due to, in my opinion, to the lack of due diligence from the planning department. Thank you so much.
Sorry. I keep turning it off because I can hear better when it's off. Is it Colin?
Colin.
Colin. You really need eight minutes?
No.
Okay, come on up. Not sure how that works. Somebody's going to have to help you other than me.
No, it's okay. So, let me just skip.
Okay. So, yeah, let's, we're just talking about...
We're just talking about the calculation.
Exactly.
Got it. Okay. So, it's been, it's been stated a couple of times, but, I mean, the reason we're here is because we kind of agreed if, if the calculations were not correct, that we could have this conversation here tonight. So, the first memo you see here reads, California Building Code Section 110.2.4. It is the city's interpretation that as per amended code, Section 110.2.3.4 of the City of Malibu ordinance refers to the gross floor area of the structure. The gross area includes habitable and non-habitable spaces. The other memo read same, same subject. Since the site lies within the active Big Rock Mesa landslide, the project falls under the jurisdiction of that same section of the Malibu Building Code, adopted from the County of Los Angeles Building Code. For projects located in geotechnically hazardous areas which we are in, that section of the code limits additions to 25% of the permitted square footage of the residence, including the garage. So, that was the city's interpretation. This is what the code actually reads. So, on the left, we have that section, Section 110.2.3.4 of the Los Angeles Building Code. When the proposed work involves an addition or additions to an existing structure but is not a change in use or occupancy, and such work does not increase the gross floor area of the structure by more than 25% of the area of the structure as it existed on July 6, 1968, and the building official determines that the proposed work will not impact a historically active landslide. Okay? And then, gross floor area defined in the Los Angeles County Building Code, Section 22.4.5, E1, states gross floor area shall be the total gross area of all floors of a building expressed, expressed in square feet. And then, it goes on to list what's included, but then it says excluded from gross floor area. Gross floor area shall exclude parking structures, garages.
Right.
Thank you. So, this is the property, the property square footage in 1968 was 2568. It's listed there sort of near the bottom left. And you'll see that it's dated 11366. If someone has a permit that is closer to 1968, they're welcome to produce it. So, in our, you know, ham-fisted calculation, the calculation allowing for 700 square feet addition is therefore in violation. According to the city building code, the maximum allowable square footage for any addition to the residence is 642 square feet. So, the permit must be denied until proper measurement can be approved. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to just run through the calculations so that it's very clear. Assuming that the 1966 permit that listed the 2568 is accurate, and it is defined as the total gross floor area, and if we use the definition that Colin just mentioned, which would mean that it would exclude the garage. If you take 2568, and you look at, multiply that one by 1.25, you come up with a total maximum gross floor area of 3210. 3210, if you look at the applicant's plan themselves, they quoted the square footage without the garage as 2743. So, that would be, according to the definition of gross floor area, that would be the current gross floor area as they've calculated in their plans. If you take 3210 less the 2743, that would give you at most 467 square feet that the addition could mean. That's assuming that this, that the 2568 excludes the garage. If it includes the garage, which we're not sure what, what size the garage is, but looking at the applicant's plan, I looked at the overall square footage of the residence, and I backed out the, which was 3,078 square feet. I backed out the, the garage, the, the square footage that exclude the garage, which was 2743, and that meant the garage size, according to their plan, is 335 square feet. If I subtracted the 335 square feet from the 2568, that gives me 2,233 square feet as the gross floor area. And if I multiply that by 1.25, that would mean that the total maximum would be 2791.25 square feet. Okay? Looking at, again, looking at the gross square floor area that they've actually calculated on their plan, which was 2743, again, it was without the garage, you have a maximum of 48, 48.25 square feet as the maximum. So, either way, either way, if it's included, or if it's not included in the 2568, it's still less than the 770 square feet that they've actually asked for. So, either way, it needs to be rejected. Thank you.
Gerhard Idy and Rosemary, you want to speak? Come on up.
Just one thing you mentioned before. There was never a bedroom approved to begin with in 2005. It was a garage building. It was a garage building. And this inflation of a square footage should almost disallow any development, in my opinion. This property does not support the, the water use, not be good for the neighboring property.
Well, we're just sticking right now with the calculations, Rosemary.
And that's it. That's what I have to say. But I agree with the square footage.
Okay. Gerhard, you going to speak? Okay, Daniel Allen. Hey, you're available for questions if pulled. It's been pulled.
Available. It's the same slides as sent in the memo this morning.
Parker, can you load the presentation? Takes a second.
Just a general comment. A lot of innuendo about our misrepresenting the plan areas has been made. I don't have the luxury of faking the plan areas. But we have the survey drawings, we have the existing plans, we have the proposed plans. They're all drawn to scale. They're based on, the surveyors, you know, doesn't come from us, it's in the, in the set. Staff has the ability to measure the plans to scale and confirm square footages. So, they have done that. We've, I've had discussions with Jessica about our analysis of the areas, but I can't really fake all of that because it's in the drawings and they can measure it and call me out if I'm misrepresenting the areas. In general, there's a lot of conflation of different types of areas. We have the original building permit area. As Ms. Bundy stated, traditionally, that would have been habitable only, would not have included a garage, an attached garage. We have the assessor area. Assessor areas are based on historic permit records. Those also do not include garages. We have total development square footage. That includes garages, wall thicknesses, any overhangs greater than six feet. We're well under the limit on total development square footage percentages on the project. Anyway, we're focused on the 25%. Many of the comments conflate TDSF with assessor and insinuate that we have misrepresented the areas. To try to answer the history of how the areas differ, we provided a series of, let's skip that. I'll skip the code because Ms. Bundy's already commented on the code. We provided a series of area diagrams. At the time when I prepared the diagrams, I didn't, wasn't sure that staff was going to be measuring the drawings to scale, so I provided, I broke every area down into rectangles with decimal square feet, did a table documenting it so anyone could look at these, these drawings, double-check my math that, you know, because I've been accused of misrepresenting the project multiple times. Everything I show is on paper. Our basis as per the code and has been already established is based on the gross building square footage 25%. We're relying on a survey for that. If you need to, we can have the surveyor do some sort of certified document, come in and state, you know, what the building gross square footage is. There's a reasonable question, which is, has this, has this project been added to in the past that would, that would have been an increase from the 1968 area and therefore be a second bite of the apple? It's a fair question. So, there's no evidence that I can find to substantiate that there were additions done to the building since then. There's no increase in plumbing fixture counts. There's no change in the roof line with additions that would be typical as would have been done in a residential. And I'm sorry if I'm going over, there's a, if, I have no, we have no evidence that there's been additions that have been done. So, the question is, well, how did the building permit square footage get established? Because we have different records of the building square footage, we have the assessor square footage, and I'm sorry, I don't remember all these numbers, but on the right is the assessor square footage. The assessor square footage excludes the garage in blue, but it does include the portico and the deep entryway on the front. We're not using the assessor square footage for any of our calculations. But what we provided to staff was a document that shows, on the right, this is how the assessor square footage could, would have been measured, and it's in paper, they can verify it. On the left is the 1966 permit. What we realize is that in 1966, they built the garage most likely as a rectangle. In the current plan, there's, notches have been taken out by interior renovations that reduced the garage square footage and changed the assessor square footage. If you, in 1966, it was straightforward, you just have a rectangle for your garage. We provided calculations to staff showing how if you don't include those porticos, you count the garage as a rectangle. The yellow represents the 2568, I apologize, I'm not remembering the numbers correctly. But the yellow matches the permit areas from 1966, has a blue garage, that's a rectangle, matches the survey footprint. Again, I'm relying, I have, all the drawings are there for staff to verify.
Okay, thank you. You get your, just your three minutes this time and...
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Left is total development.
But you can, you can, I'm sure the commissioners may have some questions for you, so hang on there at the, at the podium. Just one other point, though. Don Kowalski, I take it you're here just to testify as to the geology of it? Okay, fine. So, is there anybody else who wants to speak just on the issue of, of the measurements? Hearing now, we're going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission table. Commissioner Hill, you have a question for Mr. Allen?
Yeah, when was this survey done that you're showing us? Not before 1968, right?
No. That's what survey was done for the 2005 and we had it updated by, in our most recent.
And to be clear, I don't know that anybody is, at least in this present frame of discussion, nobody's talking about TDSF or tax assessor data numbers. We're not conflating that. I think we're looking at the number on the original building permit and what the code says, 2568. So, I, I don't mean to start testifying here now, but I just wanted to be clear that whatever the survey is we're looking at is not the data that exists as of 1968.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners?
Just to, to understand kind of the context here, and maybe this is more to Trevor than anyone else, but what, what goes through my head is, is there risk in this decision we make? And when, when I read that code that is there from the LA County, I interpret that to say that you don't include the garage, et cetera. And if, just for worst-case scenario, there were a failure in this area, would this, would the city be in, at any risk because we allowed development like this to go beyond what the county advised? That's where my head goes on this.
I'm not sure you sort of, in terms of liability, there wouldn't be liability towards the city in terms of this. I, I think Yolanda can address about the garage, I think she wanted to, you want to speak on?
Yes, clarification on the codes and code updates and at the LA County and the California building standards. Just a little bit of information. The State of California releases minimum building code compliance every three years. 2016, the State of California releases this code, this law, this regulations, and it gives the jurisdiction to look more into that on how to amend the code. The City of Malibu, being so close to the County of LA and having similar hazardous mitigation areas, decides to then adopt the same LA amendments. And this is the portion of the section of the code that we're referring to, to Section 110. This is part of the California Building Code. All the white sheets are the state mandate amendments. They haven't been changed or amended. The only items that has been amended by the County, LA County, are the gray sheets colors. And those are done, the state allows to do this amendments to tailor to more areas topographically, if we have any geological issues. In this instance, this section 110.2.3.4 has been amended, but it's part of the California Building Code. Under the definition of a California Building Code, you don't use a zoning definition when you're talking about the gross floor area. It is a section dictated in Chapter 2 of the Building Code that hasn't been amended by that, by the LA County or the, or the City of Malibu.
Then, then just to clarify, because you're, you're getting right to the core where my head is on this too. So, county had the right to revise state code based on geological issues. We're in this, this is a geological issue that we're talking about. And in the county code, it has reference to gross floor area, which they have defined in their code. So, what gives us the confidence to say, even though LA County code refers to a different definition of gross floor area, we still need to refer to the state's definition?
Just be aware that the, the definition of gross floor area that was cited in the opponent's letter came from the LA County zoning code, not...
It's not part of the amendments to the building code.
Not the building code. So, that's the distinction. That's a zoning, county zoning code definition of gross floor area that's saying that you should exclude the garage. It's not the building code.
Right. So, the building code then at the state level defines gross, gross floor area as that, including garages.
That is correct, and that is part of Chapter 2 of the Building Code.
Okay, thank you. And the city has not amended that definition.
And the City of Malibu has not amended that section.
Nor has the county.
Nor has the county. And we can provide those documents. I have the hard copy right here in front of me.
Okay.
Trevor, question?
John?
I want to understand zoning code and building code. In Malibu, if we have a zoning code that says TDSFX, that rules, right?
There's, each code has its own separate definitions. You can't cross-reference the definitions.
But one is superior to the other. If, if our zoning code says you can't build a house more than 11,520 feet, and the building code is silent on that, you can't build a 15,000 square foot house because it says nothing. Right?
What you, what you guys normally deal with is the planning, you know, our planning and zoning code, and then the definitions that are within here. In this situation, the constraint, there's an independent constraint on the size of the building here, not from our zoning code, but on the, from the building code. And so, what Yolanda is saying is that under the Building Code, we use the Building Code definitions in order to apply to the Building Code sections. And in that case, the Building Code would allow it to be built to this size. The only, you guys normally don't deal with interpreting the Building Code. The only reason it would be relevant here is because if it was miscalculated, then the zoning approvals would necessarily be void or ineffective because it would be improperly sized and they wouldn't actually be able to build that per the Building Code. So, what she's saying is that the calculation was made correctly under the Building Code, so that shouldn't be an impediment to your decision on the planning and zoning issues before you. Does that make sense?
No.
I'm sorry.
Craig?
Yeah. If I can, well, just to clarify John's question.
I think you can sit down. If somebody has a question for you, they'll bring you back.
This, the municipal code incorporates the county code, it adopts it by reference. So, that's why we're not talking about TDSF or anything else. We are using the county standard there.
Yep.
It seems to me that the discussion about whether or not the garage gets counted is relatively moot, except as to whatever you might redesign. If you have a little bit, it, it only determines how much extra room you have, but in either case, and I don't know that we can get some confirmation, maybe Chris, you have the numbers better, but whichever way you count it, you still don't have enough headroom to put the 770 in there. And having made that point, I also wanted to observe that, I just noticed for the first time that that language, when, when you showed it there, the county code, the requirements of it, of getting the 25% additional, also included that it not impact a historically active landslide. I hadn't noticed that before, but clearly if there's a, not, if there's, if this is not a historically active landslide and we're not, it doesn't say impacted by a significant amount or, you know, it's any impact whatsoever. It's not limited in any way. So, that to me seems like it would categorically exclude this regardless of the size.
Well, and, and just, I'm just going to throw something out there to start to form a motion because it seems like we're in agreement that this needs to be redesigned. It doesn't, it can't hit the 770. So, what would be the right procedure to get a motion to get to that point and what would be the process we'd go to?
I think the commission is looking at saying that the, the size, there's an insufficient size of, of what the size of the project was in 1968. Does the staff have any other input about establishing the size of the project?
All that would be added was that, that 2568, as I previously mentioned, and I had confirmed with Yolanda earlier, likely did not include the garage and was just habitable space and not non-habitable. So, likely it would have included the garage as well in addition to the 2568.
You're saying that the garage was likely built at that time but not counted in the 2568 number?
Correct, and that would not have been included within that building permit.
And that you don't have evidence that they've built since then, and that's why staff's basing its calculation upon the current size today? Is that correct?
That is correct. There's been no code enforcement or any other evidence that suggests that the building footprint was altered other than was built in 1966.
And that also lines up with testimony by Mr. Allen, if I remember correctly, the exact 2568. So, I mean, I think we're all realizing that, that applicant's requests can't fit that part of the code, so if they need to revise their plans, what would be next steps for them and for us?
So, you're, you're saying you, that you believe that, you're being that, that the house has been expanded in size since 1968 and that's already counted against the 25%?
No, I'm, I'm more stating that if you do the math that we all just talked through a couple of times, I don't think you can get the 770 out of it, the 770 that they have in their design. So, they'd have to reduce the expansion of the house to stay within that 25% envelope, no matter how we count the garage.
Well, if, if there was 2568 in terms of not including the garage, and the garage was approximately how many square feet?
The total original area would look to be 522.
If you had 522 to that number, what would 25% be? Would it be...
3210.
So, it, your total 2568 plus the 522 would bring you to 3,091.48 square feet. And then if you take 25% of that, that gives you a 772 square foot addition, which this is below, that is a 770 addition.
That's not accurate.
Can I, can I try a motion?
Let's, let's try to get some clarity first, John, just on, on the calculations. Are you understanding the calculation that staff is giving?
That's to, that's to me, right?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not coming up with the same.
Okay, let's, we have a calculator. Can we just? Trevor, can you help out? Can I, you're going to get a calculator out and...
Yeah.
2568 plus...
Times 1.25.
Oh, he's got to add the garage in first. I get 4,020 for total development size, and that's below what they're asking for. Right, you have to add in the garage size.
568 plus, what would we say for garage size? 522, that's 3,090, and then divided by four, 772.5. So, that would, 25% of that, if, if you accept that the garage was 525 square...
522.
520, if you accept that the garage was 522 square feet and not included on the original building permit, then this would fall within the calculation.
I, I, just as a comment, I have a very hard time believing that a garage in 1966 would be a jumbo. And that's a jumbo garage even today, 50 years later, 60 years later.
Can I, can I ask one of the drummers to come up, please?
Okay.
On the, just visually, you guys live across the street, or Cunningham, either, either one of you. Come up. On the, and if you could, Parker, if you could put up the map that was just up on the, again?
You know what? I do want to point out one thing.
No, you're here for questions.
Okay.
Questions only.
Parker, can we have the plan, the map plan view that was just up a second ago? Well, I'll ask you the question and then, and this will pop up and illustrate what I'm trying to ask. When you look at the house, there you go. When you look at the house from the street, is the garage, the face of the garage in the same plane as the face of the house? in the same plane as the face of the house on the other side? Or does it project further out into the street as illustrated here? Just sort of asking, how accurate does the plan view look with respect to what you actually see?
Yeah. It looks like, it looks like it's in the plane.
Both sides of the house are in the same plane?
Yeah, it looks like it's in the plane.
So this looks like the garage is drawn bigger than, so it would not be 522 originally?
No.
It would have been something like John suggesting.
It's in plane. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't protrude out beyond the, the plane of the wall next to it.
So, I mean, I, at the time, I think the nominal garage size was 400 square feet was a typical number. So I, I too was, was wondering about that. And you're suggesting that, and, okay, thank you. That answered the question.
And on my prior, I, I mean, the prior calculations I gave you, gave you an estimate of 335 for the garage as it is today, based on their plan, based on their, based on their plans.
Based on their plans.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Could I try to make a motion? Sure, try one. I would like to have this sent back to staff to clarify in writing the question about the LA County Business Building Code 25% and the state building code. And I'd like verification, not just theory, on what the original house was, and whether these, these drawings are accurate. And come back with a verifiable 25% or an amendment to the project. That's your motion? That's my motion. Is there a second?
We're going to get different than what staff has already told us.
Well, we have, I, there's two questions I have. But, let's see if we can get a second to the motion, then we can discuss it. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been, Steve, you got a question that you want to raise?
Trying to figure, you know, we're going back to staff and say, "Staff, tell us what you think." And staff just told us what they think. So I know what we're going to hear is going to be different.
Well, the reason I'm doing this is I don't think staff told us. We had, we had testimony that, that, nothing staff gave us explains the difference between the county code and why. And we, we look right at the county code and, and adopted by the city, and it says.
Nor did it reflect back to 68.
We have that language. So I want an explanation in writing rather than on the fly. The other thing I, the motion is, we're having a debate about how big it was.
Okay.
We don't have any real evidence. We need real evidence, because it's critical in this case. If that garage really was 400 square feet, it makes a difference. Or if the garage was included, it makes a difference. But only under the circumstance that we had a 553 square foot garage that protruded outside of the envelope of the building in 1966, do the numbers even come close to working. John, let me ask you a question. What, supposing the documents just don't exist, what would you like staff to do in that case? Well, number one, for example, we just had a question about whether it protruded or not. Does it or doesn't it? I mean, they can verify that. They haven't, these aren't the staff's drawings, okay? Staff has never reviewed these drawings, as far as I know.
Staff reviewed these drawings when the correspondence came in.
Well, yeah, last couple of days. I want a, I want a historic review to see. And are there plans in Everbright? Because I, to tell you the truth, I've gone through that thing or whatever it's called, Everbridge?
We determined that their, that the original plans are not available?
That's correct. We have the plans from the 2005 approval, the CDP 05161.
That's never constructed.
Correct. But there's no further plans besides that 1966 building permit and that plot plan that was associated with it. But otherwise, there's been a thorough record search and no further building plans have been.
Did the 2005 application show in existing, the existing dimensions of the property?
I believe so, yes.
And did that match what has been presented here by the applicant, about what was measured for the calculation?
I believe it was consistent, but I'm going to double check right now. I'll look at it right now.
See, that's my motion. And I'd like to have before us the real facts, instead of, I guess, three or four different versions of them. All right, Bonnie and, and Trevor, do you understand the motion? It's been moved and seconded.
It's, yes, I believe the, the motion is to direct staff to return with, with the staff report laying out the, the building code interpretation and analysis that Yolanda has provided tonight, and on top of that, to provide all documentation about the size of the house as it existed prior to 1968, everything that would support that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can I clarify something?
You can, if you believe that that's not the motion, yes, you can clarify.
No, I just want to understand what I'd be voting for, because last time on this, what I voted for is not what I thought I was voting for. And, and that I'll take up with counsel later. But if, if we voted this way, my take on it is that what matters in front of us now is what was allowed at what was officially determined by July 1968.
Correct.
And all we have is, is the building permit that shows that. Unless you actually come up with the plans from prior to 68, then any amount of measuring the actual house right now is not going to be relevant to me.
Okay, whether you made your argument, and that's, and we've got, it's been moved and seconded, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Tramaza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm sorry, who was the call?
I just wanted, wanted to ask John if, if he's comfortable, when they bring back what they think, are you going to be happy with that to get, to get your answer that you're looking for?
If I get more than a two-sentence memo saying what we said was cool, okay?
I'm just trying to figure out how we get this thing done.
I, I want some back, backup on whether it qualifies. Two-sentence memo is my interpretation, it's cool. We have, we have the motion, we're taking the vote. Did you vote, Steve? Where are we, Catherine?
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Urey?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That concludes item one on the agenda. Now, you wanted to pull item 3B2, Commissioner Hill, did a de minimis waiver. This is an application for a new onsite wastewater treatment system on Cavalery Road 3, 6316. Do you need a staff report, or is it just questions?
Commissioner Jennings, do we take a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
I don't believe we did, actually.
I move the balance of the consent calendar excluding 3A1, 3B2, and 3B4.
I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead. Commissioner Hill, do you need a staff reporter?
I do not. I just have a question on this. Hopefully I don't need a report. Should I go ahead with the question?
Go ahead with your question.
This is a de minimis permit, but there, you're replacing 51 fixture units with 110 fixture units. And I, that just doesn't seem like a de minimis move to me. So I'm just sort of curious, what the, I'd like to know what the, how does that qualify as de minimis if you're more than doubling the, the number of fixture units?
So there's a planning verification approval to put the house back like for like, and then there's an APR multi-fire number 19050 to expand the property. And that has not been approved yet. That's still under the review of the Planning Department. So the additional fixture units are, are in conjunction with the APR.
Is there any sense that this would be piecemealing? If we, if we've, we've proved this now, does that in any way lock us into a later part of the project?
No.
Right? John, did you have a?
Well, Trevor, that means that we're still going to hear the 110 units?
110 units? What are we talking about?
Fixer units.
Fixer units.
It's gone from 51 to 110, but we haven't, nobody's approved 110 yet.
It's an application that's pending.
Will we hear it?
It's an administrative application.
That seems more than de minimis.
You can go up to 110% of the, of the house size that you had. And that may involve increase in the number of bedrooms, it may, it may be a new bathroom, or maybe somebody's putting in a, an outdoor shower. You know, actually 51 units, believe me, I know, it's not very many. And, and so this is, the configuration of the house is not really within our purview. The Planning Department decides that if, if you don't increase the size above 110%, then you can go on, under a planning review. If that house contains more bedrooms or bathrooms than it, that it once did, that's not within our jurisdiction. But my, it was my understanding, maybe I misunderstood it. This house is getting bigger than 110 on an application that's in the house.
That's right.
And how much bigger? Is it doubling?
No.
I don't believe so. And I wanted to clarify on the 110 fixture unit, when I'm looking at the plot plan, under the notes section, it's a conformance review fire rebuild of a two-bedroom house, 25 fixture units, and then 37 fixture units for a total of 62 fixture units, unless I'm misreading.
Plus, yes, that, plus a guest house, 14 fixture units, and there was another number somewhere adding more. Pretty confident that I came, the 110 I came up with that was accurate.
Yeah, guest house was 25 units.
I'm sorry, I have a question. This one is, this one is seeking a CDP? This is, this is not a planning verification?
It's a, it, there's an administrative plan review for some additional square footage.
APR, okay, okay. But we're never going to see it?
Right. It falls under, below the threshold that would come to the Planning Commission.
But it'll be reported, right? It's an administrative CDP?
No, it's not a CDP. It's an administrative plan review.
APR, okay.
It doesn't even come to us on consent calendar.
It's, no, it's below the threshold that would come to the Planning Commission.
I guess I'm still curious how over-doubling the number of fixture units.
It meets the requirements in the code for a de minimis waiver.
Or we're happy with that?
De minimis is not, it, it was just a term that was slapped onto a provision that, that the staff thought that they needed to, to impose. It didn't, it didn't imply that, it, it was de minimis in the sense of the subject matter, not in the, in the sense of the amounts of, of changes that were going to be made.
The definition is improvements to an onsite wastewater treatment system serving a structure that was damaged or destroyed as a result of natural disaster, where the improvements involve installing a new system or upgrading an existing system to an advanced system on the same lot. So if it meets that definition, that would be de minimis.
That doesn't say anything about expanding it.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it meets the definition.
It doesn't sound like it meets it. If, if we're concerned, can we bring it back and let people, when it's approved? I mean, is, is there a way to do that, so we can move this thing tonight? Just put it on the consent calendar?
Just have them bring it back so people can see it.
Like, can I get Richard to comment on this?
The original question asked by the commission was basically, what makes this de minimis? And what makes this de minimis is that it's associated with a home that was damaged or destroyed by fire, and it's not in the appeal jurisdiction. The de minimis waiver, as Commissioner Hill just pointed out, it does not discuss size. And he's right. Size is not a factor in qualification for a de minimis waiver. What's a factor in making that determination if it qualifies is location and associated with a fire. That's why they're able to ask for this additional capacity.
The reason for creating this process was to encourage people to upgrade to advanced systems, and that's, that was part of it, to try to make it an easier process.
The upshot here is that if you turn this down, they can just not upgrade their OWTS, and they can go through with their APR either way. The idea here is that we want to encourage people to put an improved system in, and that's why people wouldn't do it before, there wasn't a de minimis project, they had to get a full CDP, and they just wouldn't upgrade their systems. So that's the purpose of it.
Let me ask you a question. Trevor, could you read, you just read what a de minimis waiver was.
Yeah.
Could you read it again?
Yeah, absolutely. In terms of, there's two different definitions. One is for the driveway expansions, the other one is for OWTS. And this is 13.411A1, and it says improvements to an onsite wastewater treatment system serving a structure that was damaged or destroyed as a result of a natural disaster, where the improvements involve installing a new system or upgrading an existing system to an advanced system on the same lot. So if, if you, if you guys turn down the waiver, then they'll have the choice of either coming back for a full CDP for their system, or going forward and keeping the current system in place.
Well, my question on that, my question on what you read is the part that says serving a structure that was destroyed. And it appears to me this is serving a structure that was built on a structure that was destroyed.
Moreover, it says upgrading, it doesn't say expanding.
This entire amendment is designed to assist fire victims with rebuilding their house. So it's talking about a, a house that was destroyed or damaged by the fire, and any associated septic system replacement or upgrade that is related to the rebuilding of the structure. That was the whole reason for putting it in.
But it's the vast structure, it's not a new, bigger structure. It doesn't say a new, bigger structure.
It's not related to the size of the house, it's related to the rebuild. Someone could do this with a full CDP project also if they, but, you know, there wouldn't be a need to, because there would be already processing a CDP.
But so, if we're, if it's something bigger than the 10%, can we just say, "Let's bring it back and have a look at it, and maybe we'll be totally fine with it?"
You, you can't, you can't take jurisdiction to review an APR. You're never going to get a review of the house project. That's just how the municipal code's set up. So your option here is to turn down the waiver and then make them get a full CDP. And that case, the applicant just has the decision whether they want to stick with the current system or come back for a full CDP just for the OWTS. They won't be bringing the full project here.
All of this was designed at, at the time when we were talking about how to try to get people back into their houses, how to get, try to, try to help the, the fire burn, burnout victims. And the, I think it was Don Schmitz who actually raised the point about one of the aspects of de minimis waivers. He said, you know, "A lot of people are going to have trouble building a 20-foot wide fire access. So we ought to be able to have some, come up with some way to relieve the pressure on that, and, and allow a de minimis waiver of the CDP application in order to be able to help people to, to get this process going." Similarly, I think it was Joyce who came up with the same idea, said, "Look, we have situations where people are, are held back from, from trying to improve their wastewater treatment systems because of the, of the nature of the process." Now, what you guys are talking about doing is re-complicating the process and making it more difficult for these people to have their, their projects brought forward. If that's the way you want to go with it, I, I don't advise it. I think that this is probably, you know, th, these were thought out, passed by us when, when they were, when they were brought forward as part of the code package that we brought up, that we then took up to the Coastal Commission. And these waivers were considered to be de minimis, just for the very reasons that, that the staff is talking about. They're just minor changes, and, and the project itself is never going to come before you because it's an APR. So I, 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 I feared that this was going to happen, that somehow there would be a sense of a loss of control by the Planning Commission, and they would have to bring all this stuff back. But these are, these are efforts designed to try to make it easier for people to rebuild their homes and get back into them. And I, I recommend that you just approve it and let it go.
And I need, I want to, go ahead. So, just to be clear, the house that's proposed here is more than the in-kind plus 10%, correct?
The, the de minimis waiver that we're talking about is just for right now, the PV approved the house plus 10%. And now there's an application that's under review and has not been approved, the APR, for an additional expansion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's, it's for the house plus 10, or it's for something bigger than that?
So it's for an additional, it's an addition beyond the plus 10%.
So these, this application, these people did, also did not qualify for the permit fee waivers because they're building bigger than, than the in-kind plus 10%, correct? In other words, they're, they're going for the whole big complicated thing anyway. They're not saying, "We just want to do a simple, quick post-fire."
You can see, if you're interested in comparing the, the previous house that burned, the footprint with the, the house that is being processed now, you can look at the two different plot plans that are in your agenda report, and you can see that they're, it's not wildly different than, the new house is not wildly different than the previous house.
And the house really isn't an issue before the, the commission here, it's only the OWTS. So.
To, to Commissioner Jennings' point that we're trying to make it easy for people, I'm just sort of asking, are, are, have these people elected not to make it easy on themselves because they're, they're saying, "We don't need the fee waiver, we're going to do something To Commissioner Jennings' point that we're trying to make it easy for people, I'm just sort of asking, are are they have these people elected not to make it easy on themselves because they're they're saying we don't need the fee waiver, we're going to do something bigger than in-kind plus ten percent?
If it let me let me give you an example. If you wanted to build your house back and 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 put it back exactly the way it was, but you didn't have a garage before, okay? Then you wanted to add a garage, you wouldn't be able to do that under planning verification. You'd have to do that under an administrative plan review, which is just the process we're talking about here. If you wanted to build a mega mansion that you're also terrified about, you'd have to go for a full CDP. It wouldn't come under an administrative plan review, it would have to be a full CDP. Those are the houses that you're supposed that you that you should be worried about. The APR houses are are minor little adjustments. And the reason why they're APR is because there's an exemption into the act that says that for for changes that are that are for things that are normal to a single-family home, like a garage, like a swimming pool, things like that. So that's what we're talking about here.
And to add to Commissioner Chair Jennings' point, what these folks are doing in this project, they are not skating the system. I think that's the concern here that I'm hearing from the commission. If you decide to make the wastewater system a full hearing, the addition that they're proposing, it doesn't affect it. That addition is going to be processed administratively, whether or not the wastewater system is processed, however, because that addition qualifies for an exemption, and it's outside the appeal zone. If these folks had a home that was in the appeal zone and they tried to go beyond the ten percent, we could not process that ministerially, that would have to come to this commission. So effectively, what they're processing, you wouldn't see if the house was there today and the system could accommodate it, and they walked in here and said, I want to do an addition at a garage, at a barn, that would be processed ministerially. It wouldn't you're not allowing them to skate past this commission.
So basically, Dan, my questions. Jeff said the difference between a CDP and and this house is this is minor stuff and the bigger stuff has to come to us. How much bigger is this house going to be?
We don't have that information in front of us. We'd have to look at the plans.
Well, give me a guess. Forty percent bigger, fifty percent bigger, eighty percent bigger, two hundred percent bigger? Just an idea.
What triggered my question initially was it was fifty-five to one-ten or fifty-one to one it was over a hundred percent more. So I thought that sounds like they're substantially bigger house.
If and it should be noted, too, if you deny the the waiver and bring it back, it just means they need a CDP just for the OWTS system. So it would just be the findings for the OWTS system itself, there would be no review of the house.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand Jeff's statement, that if it's a lot bigger, it's a CDP. Is it?
We can.
I mean, if it's a lot bigger, is it a CDP? Or is it just the fact it's not appealed?
We can get you the square footage information. If you want to put this on hold, we can come back later and meeting with that.
Let me see if I can explain it. There there is an the reason why people can build either a replacement house or a replacement house that doesn't exceed the original house by one hundred and ten percent is because a specific exemption is written into the Coastal Act and into our LIP, right? And so if you build more, if you build a house that's the same house, but it's a hundred and eleven percent larger, you're out of the exemption. You're not there anymore. You now have to proceed that unless there is some other exemption, and unless it's a garage or some other exemption that that is.
Less than fifty percent, yeah.
Yeah, then that's that's what you're talking about. So you're pretty well assured that that large houses are not going to be somehow being processed as administrative plan reviews if it because they they would not be exempt from the Coastal Act. The Coastal Act exemption is specifically to handle disasters like this. And that's why they say you can build it back, or you can build it back plus ten percent. And that's it. That's the only exemption.
No, but my my question, I just want to get straight what you were saying. If this was a two thousand square foot house that burned down, they could build to two thousand twenty, two hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah.
If this if the if the other fifty forty-one or fifty things were a seven thousand square foot house.
The house that was built down? If the house that was burned down was a seven thousand square foot?
No, if it was twen- two thousand and they were coming in with a seven thousand square foot house, would we hear it?
Yes.
And it sounds like we wouldn't because it's not appealable.
No, no, no. It wouldn't be heard a seven thousand square foot house would not be heard as an administrative plan review.
Right.
What makes it become administrative plan review? Three thousand, four thousand, five thousand?
If it's if it's if it's a different project than what was there originally, like significantly different, there's not a hard threshold. But if it's if it's outside of the previous building pad and all and things like that, which if you were doubling the size of a house, it wouldn't fit on the same pad, that's when it becomes a CDP, when it's a new a new project.
That answers my question.
So could we get a motion, please?
And move the project.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
It's a receive and file.
Is it a receive and file? Okay, I'm sorry. Receive and file. All right, you pill you also polled three before.
Yeah, three before. Similar OWTS thing here, except this is there's some history here that I just wanted to clarify. This was in the compound that was previously the Promises Rehab, and now Cliffside has purchased it. And we're putting in an application is for OWTS for a standard residence. This is a rehab. We have in the staff report representation showing that they will have thirty people a day in this house every day. So my question and wonder is whether that's this is an adequate system for something that's not really a residential house, it has more of a commercial function with a commercial load of people. And the neighbor testimony says that this is the house that when it was Promises, this is where everybody from the several houses around there congregated in this. This is sort of the main one, so could potentially have even higher usage if the people from the other houses are there in addition to the thirty that are already listed as being there. So and then you you'll probably tell me, well, we've we've conditioned that with a requirement that there be frequent maintenance on the OWTS to cover that. But sort of ironically, the one of the residents' problems with it previously and historically was that the system needed frequent maintenance and that the trucks were up there all the time. So I just wanted to call this out and and see see people are have any concerns about putting thirty-plus people every day in a house designed for a single family.
Can I add to that question, Jeff?
John?
And our codes say, if you pump it twice in six months, you get shut down. So how can we say? How can we go against our codes and say, gee, you should pump it more? When our codes say it's considered a failure after two pumpings?
Well, let's start with the first questions. The the review that was conducted by the Environmental Health Administrator did take into consideration the number of employees. We in planning, we noticed this, too, and we had concerns about it and followed up and and confirmed that the system that's designed here is designed to support that The city has limitations on how it can treat rehab facilities like this, unfortunately. And so on the one hand, we're pleased that they're upgrading their system so that is it is hopefully going to be the sufficient system that it needs to support this use. Any of the existing plumbing codes in effect that deal with what constitutes a failure and and, you know, pumping on a certain frequency, that will all still apply. And so if, you know, if the system proves to be inadequate for some reason, and and one of those triggers is tripped, then they'll have to remediate the system or do whatever the code says about.
It doesn't exempt them from the code.
Right, they're not they're not exempt from anything like that.
Good question, Trevor. Can we put a provision in here that they they need to be inspected or or have a pumping report?
Well.
This is this is an administrative plan administrative coastal development permit, so it's a receive and file item before the commission. But the the project's been conditioned by the Environmental Health Administrator with all of the code required conditions.
It says here, the conditions of approval have been included for the proposed project to require continued operation, maintenance, and monitoring of the subject system.
The the only issue before us is whether there's three votes to bring this back as a full CDP. So if there's a motion to do that. Otherwise, I want to point out that it's after nine o'clock, and we're almost done with the consent calendar.
Okay.
It hasn't been adjusted yet.
Eight o'clock, feels like nine.
Bonnie?
Feels later than that.
You mentioned there were three houses. Or I think maybe Craig did.
There there were originally five, and now there there are two and a third that's smaller, so it's sort of two and a half.
Okay. What's happening to the other two and a half, the other? Other one and a half, are they coming in for?
You actually had one on your last agenda for the same septic upgrade, and it listed the number of employees and stuff. It was also on Rockcroft, I believe it was right next door.
Okay.
So you received and filed that one.
A quick question of staff, if I could, Jessica. Do you know any details, more details on the code violation that was cited from March thirteenth, twenty seventeen? It just states illicit discharge. Was that due to failure of the system, overuse? Any any more insight?
It was just for the failure of the system, which was addressed under Emergency Coastal Development Permit eighteen zero zero seven.
Got it. So what you we couldn't directly address that to the extent of use or anything, it just failed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to bring it back, or can we receive and file?
I'm over receiving file.
I'll second.
Well, there is no motion, but it's received and filed.
Okay.
Okay, we're now at item four A. This is coastal development permit number nineteen oh oh three and a demolition permit on that project, two eight eight, two zero Cliffside Drive. We've heard it before, back in front of us again. I have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Jennings, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you this evening is CDP number nineteen zero zero three, a follow-up application to Emergency Coastal Development Permit number fifteen zero zero nine. The project is located at two eight eight two zero Cliffside Drive, which you can see here is located on Point Doom at the very end of Cliffside Drive on the ocean side. The project incorporates the work completed under ECDP number fifteen zero zero nine, which included twenty solder piles tied together by a grade beam and the demolition of a portion of the house which had been red-tagged in two thousand nine, and I'll show you that in a second. A temporary wall currently caps the exposed portion of the house. An additional work is also proposed, including fourteen more solder piles tied together by a grade beam and a permanent wall where the demoed portion of the house was previously. The piles are necessary due to potential long-term instability of the bluff, as well as instability that could be trigger an event during a during a seismic event and to provide for adequate factor of safety for the existing building pad landward of the solder piles. The total amount of concrete used by the project, including all thirty-four solder piles and the grade beam, would be one thousand one hundred and six point five six cubic yards. In addition, the demolition permit is included in this application, and that serves to memorialize that demolition of the house, which has already taken place. As you can see from the site plan, there are thirty-four total soldier soldier piles proposed, all tied together, as I said, by a grade beam located entirely below grade. The solder piles installed under the ECDP run along the coastal bluff where a slope failure occurred in two thousand nine and and others have occurred before that. And the proposed new piles are located along the inland slope on the northern property boundary. And you can see those indicated in blue and the ones that have already been completed indicated in green. The red-tagged portion of the house is located on the southeast corner, and you can see that labeled in red. It had to be removed in order to install the southernmost solder piles because it was deemed inhabitable. The wall which will now enclose which will enclose the now exposed area of the house will not extend beyond the footprint of the house and extends to the existing roofline. Here's a rough three D view from Google Earth of the project area. The yellow line loosely follows where the solder piles are proposed to be, the future solder piles, and the orange line shows the piles that have already been installed. As you can see, the area of the residence that was demolished was incredibly close to the edge of the bluff, which is why the piles along the bluff top were deemed an emergency. Because the slope failure has not occurred on the northern inland slope where those yellow piles are proposed, that part of the project was not considered to qualify as a minimum action necessary to address the emergency. However, they are still necessary in order to protect the house from failures if they occur in that area in the future. Again, as you can see in the top two photos here, the house was previously right to the edge of the coastal bluff. That's sheer drop right at the edge of the house there and is now roughly twenty feet farther back, which is you can see in the bottom two photos, the this is how the site looks today. In the bottom two photos here, you can see the top of the solder pile structure, which is well below grade and runs along the coastal bluff. The top left photos show the end of the work allowed under the ECDP, so that corner of the property where the solder piles would turn. And they long run along a short distance on that other part of the property line, which is what you can see in the upper right-hand photo. In September of this year, Coastal Commission staff submitted a letter expressing their concerns related to the impacts of the project on shoreline sand supply and public access, as well as expressing that the project could be considered a shoreline protection device. Part of their correspondence included the concern that sand supply and public access would be adversely impacted due to exacerbated beach erosion caused by the increased amount of wave action once the solder piles structure is exposed. In this case, the main source of sand for the subject area is actually from stream sediments. The bluff on which the project is proposed produces predominantly silt and clay rather than sand during the erosion process. As such, the project would not limit the contribution of sand from the subject property and the applicant. And the city geo-technical engineer is here to talk more about that if you would like. In addition, the exposure that the Coastal Commission staff were concerned about and the exacerbation of erosion from wave action would not occur during the expected economic lifetime of the structure because the very hard shale rock that composes the subject bluff will erode landward at the rate of approximately one point eight inches per year. In other words, at that rate, it will take over two hundred years before any portion of the solder pile wall would be exposed from wave action within the wave uprush zone as the bottom of the bluff is more than thirty-four feet seaward from the closest solder pile. Per the city coastal engineering and geotechnical staff, the solder piles and the grade beam structure do not qualify as a shoreline protective device. A shoreline protective device is development specifically designed to protect beachfront structures from coastal hazards, including wave action located within the within the wave uprush zone as it exists or may exist within the future one-hundred-year period. Because the bluff face is so steep, which you can see here, the wave uprush zone is restricted to the beach and several feet landward of the bottom of the bluff face. While future bluff instability and retreat is going to be in part due to wave action and the rate of sea level rise, the project is not considered a shoreline protection device as the solder piles are not in place to directly protect the house or the wastewater treatment system from breaking waves or wave uprush. Rather, they are they have been constructed to provide lateral resistance to prevent major future slope failure caused by the general slope instability and a seismic event that could impact the improvements landward of the solder soldier piles. In summary, staff recommends the adoption of Resolution nineteen seventy, which approves CDP nineteen zero zero three, including the demolition permit number nineteen zero twenty-four. I'm available for questions, as is other members of staff and the applicant.
Thank you very much. Any disclosures of ex parte communications that are not within the staff report, Steve, Mr. Marks?
Yeah, I visited the site with Commissioner Hill and Norm Heaney. And one observation I'd make is I I'm a little like the the survey and illustrations versus kind of the the photos up here and everything, the the distances are a little concerning. So I do want to talk through some of that, and I didn't feel that was detailed as well in the staff report as I would have liked to see.
I visited the site with Commissioner Maza. We met with Norm Heaney, walked the site, got a good perspective of what was going on, but didn't learn much that was not in the staff report.
John?
I visited with Steve, same comments. I don't know if Mark Strom still owns this property, but he was an employee twenty-five years ago and shared office space with the company I owned. But it has nothing to do with his property. I also was walking the beach when this when the. the slide happened, and I was about 500 feet from it at the time. So I observed what happened.
Was there anything that you observed as different than what's reflected in the report that would impact the application here today?
Well, there's some differences of opinion on how slopes happen. You want me to just explain that?
Well, you directly saw this. Was there anything special that you saw when the slope failed?
Yeah, it failed from the top, not the bottom. And you can obviously see it in the plans, in the photograph. I'll ask questions about that later. It has nothing to do with my decision.
Great.
I visited with Commissioner Marks, as stated, with Norm Haney. At the time, I learned that they didn't use any sort of horizontal tieback or anchoring or deadman system owing to an impracticality of hanging drillers over the side, but that that didn't obviate a potential need for that kind of horizontal stability. I marked off some measurements with my feet in several places and observed that the cliff face is substantially closer to the piles than indicated on the 2014 GeoMap. We can get into those numbers, but they are radically different. And I asked a question about potential interaction between seepage pits and the structures. Norm, at the time, mentioned that the pits were on the other side of the building, but they were actually on the front side, within 25 feet of the piles. So my question about any potential interaction there is still unanswered. The other part of the project is to do a 50% remodel nominally. That's not before us. Still waiting for a geotech study on the 14 piles as to their necessity. And I spoke with several locals who live right near there who indicate that the public access below on the beach is not constant because of the tide, but is passable often enough. Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Can we ask questions of staff? Just, or do you just want to jump?
No, questions of staff is, I think we'll get the public hearing first, and then we'll allow questions of staff. I think maybe your questions will be partially answered. And the problem is, the questions of staff period tends to be duplicated when we get to the hearing process. So, Norm, you and Mark Barrett are the applicant team, is that right?
That's correct.
You have 15 minutes.
Can I ask if there's any opposition?
I have no slips.
All right. Then I'll start. First of all, I want to praise the staff for a very comprehensive staff recommendation. It's rare that I see something as articulate and definitive as what I've seen Justine and Director Blue that came up with. It answers all the questions that was requested by the Coastal Commission. It was very comprehensive. So basically, what we're talking about here is we're talking about soldier pile wall, which is basically a subterranean retaining wall. And you drill the piles down, various size depending on how much lateral force they're supposed to resist. They vary anywhere between three feet in diameter to six feet in diameter, and they extend down between 50 feet and as much as 85 feet. The largest pile is six feet in diameter. It also has reinforcing steel in it that is 80,000 PSI. This steel is, you can't buy it anywhere. It has to be manufactured special for you, if it's number 18, which is two and a half inches in diameter. And I, when I went to school over 40 years ago, the standard was 36,000, and now we're up to 80,000 PSI. Let me move forward here, though, very quickly. I'm assuming this is the pointer, but it is not operative today. Okay. Do we have one that is operative?
We'll stop the clock for Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
Norm, you have to press real hard on that one.
Okay, here we are. It doesn't show up very well here. This is the portion of the house. Well, you can see it next to the...
Kathleen, start the clock.
Looks like a mansion. Okay. Let's move on. When the location of the piles were established, I heard mentioned that they weren't exactly where it shows up in the geology report. You can only get so close to the house. In this case, the piles that are closest to the house, the center of the pile is within 12 feet of the house. And this is the closest. It's the portion of the house that was eliminated, and then there was an additional 40 feet, where it's also closer to 60 feet, where it's also within 12 feet of the house. It's also, the center line is also within 12 feet of the top edge of the bluff. And the reason for that is that your drill rig is 90 feet wide, I'm sorry, nine feet wide, and you need to have then four and a half feet adjacent to the house, and then you have the auger, which comes up and swings to the right and drops the spoils. In every hole, you have over 27 cubic yards of spoils. Just so that you understand what that means, that's basically three full truckloads, dump truckloads, and you cannot put it on the seaward side. The Coastal Commission will not allow that. Not only that, you don't want to get that close with a loader or a bobcat. You don't want to get that close to the edge of that bluff. So that's the reason that the piles are placed where they are. It's completely below the surface of the ground. There was also a question that we're saying 12 feet, but we've also heard today 34 feet and 35 feet. The difference is, it's 12 feet from the top edge of the bluff, okay? It is 34 to 35 feet in some areas, that's the closest, where it's to the toe of the bluff. So we have a bluff that extends down at an angle, and the toe is what is subject to wave uprush. In fact, the closest that we have is substantially further than 34, 35, because that hits the spoils at elevation 25. The spoils are from the previous landslide. So that if you're really talking about where the waves strike the toe, you'd be talking closer to 40 feet from the outside edge of the closest pile. From that point, it moves back. The 90th pile is 50 feet from the top edge of the bluff and closer to 55, no, actually, it's closer to 65 feet from the actual toe. And this is a bluff that erodes at the rate of 1.8 inches per year, on average. So why are we building it? We're building it because the owners of the property have a right to protect their house. And obviously, this is a necessity, protect the house. The area is unstable. It does not meet the 1.5 stability factor for static. It doesn't come close to the 1.0 stability factor for pseudostatic. In fact, the planar pseudostatic boundary line, the area that is seaward of that line, includes the entire house. So if we had a major earthquake, there's a good chance that the entire house would go in to the ocean. Something that I think is really important that was completely left out, we've always been talking about private property and the protection of the house, but I think there's an obligation too, to consider the safety of the people that recreate on this beach. It's something the Coastal Commission has completely left out, but this will help stabilize the entire bluff top, and that will make recreation on this beach a lot safer than it currently is. I'm going to try and move this forward here and get to, one of the things I want to show you here in this is that the top edge, where you see the striped area, that is a community access. And at the time, I didn't realize that it was that close to the ravine. If the ravine were to fail, and right now, it doesn't meet the 1.5 stability factor, and that's the reason for the additional 14 piles, it would likely kill anyone that was gaining access on that area. The property line is on the south side. The striped area is the community access. You know, this is very hard to see, but we'll go through. The one red stripe you see at the bottom, that is cross-section E on the soils report and geology report. It's the one that is closest to the part of the house that was red-tagged. The others, the yellow represents the 20 piles that have already been constructed, that you've seen pictures of, and the distance between the center line of the pile and the top edge of the bluff in some areas is as close as 12 feet, also 12 feet from the house itself. As it extends, what amounts to the north, we then go into the 14 piles, all of which are set back more than 50 feet from the top edge of the bluff. But just on the north side of that yellow line, which is the property, or I'm sorry, the blue line, which is the property line, is the access for the community access way. It's approximately 30 feet below the top edge of the bluff. That's one of the primary reasons we want to put in the other 14 piles. I'm going to move on here. Okay, this is probably the most important diagram. You see the yellow on the south side, that's the top edge of the bluff. The area just below that is the actual bluff itself and the spoils. The closest area is to the top edge of the spoils area at elevation 25. In order for that area to be in the wave uprush, you'd have to get rid of the spoils. That's why 34 to 35 feet is really not representative. This is a cross-section, and it looks like E. You can see the top of the house up there, and you can see where the pile is located. That is the correct location of the pile. And it goes down through the potential slide plane. That is the slide plane that calculations suggest if there was a slide, it would occur along that plane. The pile will go down substantially further than that in order to establish fixity. This is the next cross-section. This is cross-section D, and this is one of the largest piles. And you can see that if this pile is placed, all of the area to, as you look at the photograph, all the area to the left would eliminate the driving force on the area on the beach side of the pile. So this would reduce the potential for a slide substantially. I don't know if it's 30% or 40%, but it's substantial. This is C, and you can see how far away that pile is actually from the top. You know, I wrote on the top up there, but I can't really see the distance. I think this is, excuse me.
54.
That's 54 to the toe. It's going to take 500 years before it gets there. This is obviously another cross-section, and the final cross-section is interesting. This cross-section actually is very close to the access, and it would actually take the entire house if it were to slide. And this is the planar pseudostatic slide. It's the pink one, which is theoretically what would go if we had a number eight on the Richter. The only reason we're putting in these piles is for two reasons. One is to protect the house, and the other is for safety for people recreating along the beach. Safety doesn't seem to come into the Coastal Commission's concern, but after those three folks died in Encinitas from a failure very close to what happened here in 2009, I think it's incredibly relevant to consider safety. We did consider the tiebacks. That would require a shoreline protective device. It would also require tiebacks that go in anywhere between 60 and 70 feet, and then gun-nighting the entire bluff face. That is not the least damaging environmentally alternative. So we didn't move forward with that. And I'm available for any questions that you may have. But again, I want to say that I thought the staff report was done extremely well. Tying the piles together with a grade beam basically is a composite structure. One pile cannot fail unless piles on either side fail. And that means that if there's, if there's any miscalculation in the slide plane or the amount of force against it, if the other piles are done properly, they will take care of it. Basically, it's a safety mechanism when you tie all the piles together. I'm here available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. I take it that, Mark, you're here to answer questions if there are any. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this project? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to come back to the commission table. Before we begin, let's just remind ourselves that we're here for the purpose of making certain findings that are required in order to grant a coastal development permit. General findings are on page nine of the staff report. The shoreline and bluff are on 15 and 16, and public access is on 17. So while, I want to avoid the possibility of getting into discussing the merits of, or the enjoyable debates about geology and engineering and global warming and sea level rise and all the rest of it. But unless they're tied to a particular finding, I would hope that you would keep your questions related to those findings and really focus on those that are making a determination for you, whether they're going to push you one way or the other on the finding and question. So with that, who would like to start? John?
Norm, can I get the pointer back?
And while that's coming up, I just want to clarify, this is the first time we're hearing this tonight, right? I think you'd stated earlier that we had heard this before, but this is our first time.
It came up in front of us before. It was on our agenda, but I think you got to continue.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, since I'm pretty familiar with this, I just want to straighten out some of the information. Could you show the slide? I think it's your first slide that shows the overall, the view from above. No.
Slide A.
All the way back in the beginning.
The other presentation, though, or Norm's presentation?
Staff presentation.
Yeah.
You had a photograph. Okay, whoop, backup one. Okay, whoop, backup one. Yeah, I just want to point out, there's a lot of discussion in the staff report about wave action. And I've walked this beach maybe 6,000, 7,000 times since I lived there for 45 years. All of the slides on the bluffs from the headlands all the way down to Paradise Cove come from the top. They are never caused ever, ever, ever by wave action. And you'll notice on this one, this is where the hole is, that's where the rocks are. And this is because, mainly because of overwatering. Prior to 1980, maybe one slide every 10 years. Now it's one slide every year. So all the discussion about wave action is basically irrelevant. This is hard sandstone. Norm was right, you could kill somebody very easily. A patio came down with this, a pretty large patio. You still see parts of it on the beach. The other thing I want to point out in this presentation is these are the stairs that come across this rock for the entrance. And this house here, none of this is walked on. You come through the house here, across the river, and then down. So this is never going to kill anybody on the walkway down. The main entrance is from wildlife, gray fox. Other entrances from cliffside. So those really don't need to be in the staff report. The argument that wave action is going to do anything to this property is basically irrelevant. The undeveloped properties on these bluffs have never had slides. But that doesn't mean you don't have this stuff happening. And when this house, when this fell, you literally could have walked out the back door, taken one step, and you'd die. It was literally a foot away. So this is to protect the house, not really the bluff. And this is to protect the house, not really the people below, which is kind of irrelevant in a lot of these findings. I just wanted to make that clear. And that house has been there a long time and hasn't been occupied for probably, I'd say, 20 years, maybe 25. So all of our discussion should be on, basically what the findings are, as Jeff said, and the Coastal Commission questioning of whether that's a bluff device. And that's enough for me for now.
Steve?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. And I'll go back to Jeff's thing about going to the findings. Norm, how many... How much cement does a cement truck cover? How much cement truck comes up? How many cubic yards of cement are in that truck? On average, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, it's...
12 to 14.
It's between 9 and 12 cubic yards.
And here's my problem with this whole thing, okay? I got a house that hasn't been lived in for God knows how long, okay? And probably they're going to have to redo the house someplace. They're going to tear it down, fix it up something. But I look forward and I say, if this is the plan we're going to use to protect the bluffs, I'm going to have a cement wall going from the beginning of cliffside all the way up to the headlands, okay? And I don't particularly think that's what... My opinion, I don't think that's what we want to do, all right? And I have, the problem I got is when I go to the findings, it says this was the most environmentally...
Least environmentally damaging.
...least environmentally damaging alternative, all right? I had 100 trucks, almost 100, truckloads of cement coming up to put those piles in, okay? I don't, did you, when they dug the holes for the piles, did they take dirt out?
Absolutely, they took all the dirt out and they trucked it out.
How many truckloads were there?
1,000 cubic yards.
At least 100.
Okay, so I mean, so there's 200 truckloads of stuff coming in and going out, all right? To protect the house that hasn't been lived in for God knows how long. And it seems to me that the better solution, the least environmentally damaging solution, would have been to take the house and move it back. There's a whole bunch of room behind the house to do that. We're not taking anybody's land, we're just repositioning the house a little bit. I think that would have been a much more environmentally protective solution, all right? Would have avoided the cement look or the cement walls that you guys are trying to build up and down cliffside. So I don't know how you can claim this is the least environmentally sensitive, the least environmentally damaging solution.
I can tell you why. It's because they're trying to...
I'm sorry, was that... Go ahead, Norm.
Because they're trying to protect their property, and their house is their property.
I understand that. Now, all I'm saying is if I were going to protect the house, I could... Because you're going to, I would take the house and move it back. I've protected it that way.
And I may have, if it were my property, I may have decided to do that. But under the Coastal Act of 1976 and Malibu's LCP, the house is their property, and they have a right to protect the house exactly where it is located.
I understand. That's, I, so I'm not going to, based on, I can't make these findings, and I'm probably not going to approve this project.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
Just another period. Can you go back to slide four for a second? For the, kind of the setback picture you had? This goes back to what I kind of called out in the comments earlier. That one. That 50-foot setback, what was that calculated from? Like from site visit today, or was it based off a survey line? Or how did that get arrived at? 50-foot setback marked on the picture there.
Norm, was that measured from the bluff?
Right, the dash line.
The property was surveyed, and the piles were located by the surveyor. And the 50-foot setback that you see, the green line there, it's kind of...
Section of the dash line.
You have a bottom horizontal green line, and the next one that's up, that is a 50-foot setback from the top edge of the bluff. And I've measured it, and it's correct.
It looks like from the toe, because I mean, that's what caught my attention.
To the top edge of the bluff, if the green goes to the toe, then it's significantly more than that.
But the dash line shows, is labeled 50-foot setback, not the green line.
Correct. And it just, just from the site visit we did together, when I visualize in my head that red section which was removed, the front edge of that was at the cliff face when we were there. And so that just doesn't look like 50-foot setback from the current conditions. And so it's kind of lining up with where Steve is. And that's just that so much of the structure is so, you know, over that 50-foot line as it currently exists, and that caught my attention. So that's just one observation. The other one is, just kind of doing the rough math, if I assume about 10% of the structure is steel, it's probably about 5 million pounds of material we've introduced, you know, vertically onto that bluff. As the face erodes, we're going to have, you know, however many pillars are, 40-some-odd pillars, just exposed to the community. Is, as that eventually happens, is there any protection from the city for how that would be addressed in the future? Like, is there anything that the owner would be obligated to do to kind of... I don't, you know, what do we do when that's eventually exposed? As far as kind of who's responsible for that? In terms of, I don't know, just hypothetically, I'm throwing that through you, Trevor, just for how you interpret that in future state.
If you're saying if the soldier piles became exposed and there was... And posing a danger or a hazard?
Yeah, or just however it would be interpreted as being unsightly or whatever, what it might be, you know. View from the beach, from the ocean, you'd be looking at a set of very tall piles, you know, right there in public view. Is there any kind of...
If it creates a nuisance or a hazard, then the city would have ability to go and take coenforcement action against it.
So the owner at that time would be responsible for addressing that? It wouldn't be...
Yeah, whoever created, the property owner, you know, obviously installed that. They inherit the requirements to cure any nuisance or hazard that would be looking on their property. And if they're exposed, there might be a safety issue involved as well.
Okay.
Just second, Chris. So is your thinking along the lines of least environmentally damaging alternative as well? Is that...
Basically, and I can understand where Norm and the applicant is coming from in that they're trying to really hold that back, and it would slow down the erosion. But effectively, there's even, I think, Mark's team has drawn out that in, what, 50-some-odd years, they project a kind of the top edge of that should erode away. Kind of like John was saying, the erosion happens from the top down. So we're going to be staring at, you know, 50 or 80-foot high...
I understand your argument. I'm just trying to pigeonhole it into where we are so that we can expeditiously sort of move... Just a second, John, so that we can... I'm basically trying to take a little straw poll here as we're going forward.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not necessarily saying it's the least, not the least environmentally impacting. I'm more saying what would be the city's obligation liability, the own versus owner liability in that future state?
Okay, fair enough. John?
Trevor, could we put a condition that said if the soldier piles are exposed, they must be removed? Well, that's for some rich guy 50 years from now. But that's a question, can you do that?
Or allocate funds in some form to address in an appropriate manner? You know, I don't know if the removal is the right way. We don't have to specify action.
Look, these are in. I mean, you know, these piles are in, you can't, we're not going to put... I mean, to me, the issue says, I would reject this and send it up to city council because I think somebody's got to make a decision. Is this the way we're going to protect our coastline? Are we going to have a wall, a cement wall from here to the headlands in the years coming, and is that what we want to do?
Okay, I got your argument before. John, you have another comment to add?
Well, I just wondered whether you had an answer for that.
In terms of conditioning it, I mean, if they were exposed, you still need a demolition permit or another CDP in order to take any action. So you can require them to, if they're exposed, to apply for a CDP or a demolition permit to... I don't know what you want to do, if you want to remove them or if you want to have them covered, or what action you would require.
Well, I'm just thinking of like, right now, if you have a septic tank on HPCH and it's exposed, you got to take it out. You can't do that.
I have a solution.
If you do that, you would have a hazard, which would be a little bit different situation.
Norm said, go ahead, Norm.
If any portion of the piles are exposed in the future, you can place a condition that they would have to basically put a thin veneer, perhaps an inch, two inches thick, of dark brown concrete, lath, not lath, but stucco on the part that's exposed, and continue to do so as time goes on to help mitigate the concrete. In terms of safety, these piles aren't... They were designed by structural engineers that have very good reputations and liability insurance, and they're not going to fall down.
Oh, I'm not worried about them falling down. I'm just worried about, I think as Steve is, Paradise Cove looking like coastline between Getty and Topanga, which is a gun-eyed hill with pipes sticking down.
You know, I'm not talking about gun-iding everything, just the edge that's exposed, that's all.
Let me go to Craig.
Okay. I will get to some findings that I don't think are met here. Let me first just say that, doing some math based on my observations there, you will be extremely lucky if this four bluff in front of the structure is standing in 50 years. You've got, by your own numbers, you have... When you say it's 12 feet at the closest on the 2014 plan, this said it was 20 feet at the closest. So in five years, that's receded eight feet, by your admission. And by my measurement, in the five years, that same location has receded 12 feet. So you're looking at two and a half to three feet a year of recession. And that's isolated pockets, but as those grow, the surface area of the other pockets will become more exposed, and the whole thing will go relatively quickly. I have a whole bunch of stuff developed on that I won't get into, but just for the record, I wanted to point that out. And then on the findings that aren't met, aside from what's been mentioned already, this does have to, by Coastal's letter, this does need to be treated as a concrete shoreline protective device. It needs to be analyzed as such because all this happens before 100 years. And what will happen, it will impede public access at the bottom because if you have a natural toe eroding, that will crumble in a way that there will, even at high tide and even as the sea level rises, there would always be some way to sort of clamber over that. Whereas if you draw this solid face there, as wave action increases and as sea level comes up, it will, there will be no opportunity for sand to accrete or no debris, no talus of any sort there. So it's, in the future, 50 years out, this is impeding access along the beach. So you cannot meet finding A2, LIP finding A2. And finding A3, we haven't mentioned it, that will, you've described it, but that would be a scenic and visual resource impact as seen from the beach or from the ocean in the marine-protected area. So can't meet that finding. In section three, the coastal development permit findings, I see problems with every subsection there. And I don't know if we need to go through all that. I can just call out section three.
I think that's probably good enough.
Right? And there's more I could talk about. There's some good ideas here, but I think in the end, you know, you've... The public interest is important. And you've said you have a right to protect your property, and you cited the clause in the Coastal Act about how that this government action shall not be construed as authorizing to grant or deny a permit in a manner which would take or damage private property for public use without compensation. But if we did nothing here, it would be the same result as a denial. There's no taking involved here. And I think what Steve said is exactly right, that you've got plenty of room on the site.
You're denying a permit that could protect this house.
The natural move here would have been to not put anything and let the slope do the natural retreat, as Coastal suggested, and move the house back.
All right, so what I'm hearing is a concern that would sort of lead to a motion to direct staff to return with a motion or with a resolution of denial based upon the inability to find that the proposed application is the least environmentally damaged alternative. And in fact, that the findings regarding shoreline and bluff cannot be made and that the public access findings cannot be made because the project has a possibility of adversely affecting both of those areas. Is that consensus of the group?
Well, I just wanted to... There's some findings that I think, and I don't know how this works, but some findings I think that they couldn't make, and that is that it affects beach sand because it's directly adjacent to a stream that does put out beach sand in much greater quantities than the erosion.
That's one of the findings in the shoreline and bluff section on pages 15 and 16, if you would like to refer to a specific finding that you think ought to be included.
Can we clarify also, if this is where it's headed, whether this is to the, towards the piles that have already been installed as well as the new proposed piles?
Well, I have a question on that. What do we do when the city gives an emergency permit for something this giant? And then we turn it down? Norm's obviously, or Mark Strom is obviously, can't pull those things out.
You're going to have to look at the environmentally least damaging alternative. You take these piles out, not only are you going to destroy the house, but you're also going to destroy the bluff. And...
That's my question. Chris? Do you get involved at all when these emergency things come in that are so giant? Because as I understand, it was issued five or six or seven years after the flood, the slide.
We did a full geotactical review of the emergency permit and looked at the geoconcepts reports and the stability analysis and the design of the piles. So we did do a full review of that.
But I know you did a review. My question is, what made it an emergency? If it had been that way for five or six years and then took another, what, 10 years to put them in?
The emergency was the one wing of the house that was teetering on the edge of the bluff and the proximity of the house and the potential for future rockfall that occurred back in 2009. So in our mind... occurred back in 2009, so in our mind, it was an emergency, that needed to be...
Yeah, I guess it's, my question is, you give an emergency permit, and then ten years later, it happens, so it probably wasn't an emergency, right? Or we get into a situation where it's already done, I mean, I can see a demo in the house, but does anybody ever consider, you give an emergency, they got to do it? And we get emergencies for septic tanks that are fifteen years old, they haven't done yet.
Well, they had been proposing piles for a long time, and when it became really imminent that the house was hanging over the bluff, and there was a slide, I actually, it may have started with, when Joyce was the director, the request for emergency permits, and so I, when it became a question to me, I said no numerous times, but I became concerned about rockfall from the top of the bluff, and people being on the beach.
So did UCLA do anything, or is this one Mark bought it?
I think the first time it was proposed, UCLA still owned it.
Okay, so Trevor, the question is, give it an emergency permit, and then we turn it down. What's the obligation of the city to do anything?
The code addresses what happens if a follow-up CDP isn't granted for the development to remain permanently, and it's basically that it has to be removed.
Good luck, okay.
Okay, can I just clarify that, and for the record, quick question, is it correct that the red tagging of just the one room in the house was the basis for the piles? If that's the case, then it seems like you would have had, the emergency would have consisted of maybe four or five piles to protect the red tagged, and if the rest of the house wasn't red tagged, then presumably it was okay, and if it wasn't okay, why wasn't the whole house red tagged? It seems like you had an emergency with one room, maybe four piles, and leveraged that into somehow putting in twenty piles, four of which aren't even in front of the house, they're past the house towards the canyon, so I don't, it just doesn't matter-
This is sort of water under the bridge, isn't it?
Yeah, but for-
We have the fact that these piles are in, I don't think that there's anybody sitting at the table who's going to suggest it would be a good idea to go in and take them out, so maybe somebody can come up with an approach that would prevent them from having to come out, but yet, on the other hand, if there are other piles, the new piles, if you don't like them, you can frame a motion to prevent them from going for it.
Well, my question really followed on the heels of John's, just for other cases in future, when we have an emergency.
Right, and that's a great conversation to have, but, you know, we've got a lot of people in front of us that we need to get done, so let's stick to this particular case, this particular issue, what we want to do with it.
I'd look forward to a continuance, so that I can try and figure out a way in which to mitigate your concerns.
Well, before we do that, let me just make a comment, and that is, this is obviously going to be decided by the Coastal Commission, you know, judging by their letter, and I wouldn't put it past them to say, take it out. How you could do that, who knows, but that's why I was asking those questions. So I'd like to make a motion for a continuance, I think that's a fair way to do it, I don't know what answers you can come up with, but you should have a chance, since it's, what, four million dollars into it.
The continuance to a date uncertain, is that the motion?
Norm, you like a date uncertain, or you want two months from now, something like that?
Two months from now would be great.
To be clarified, the continuance would be for the purpose of figuring out how to take it out, or?
Not really, we have fourteen pilings coming that we haven't approved yet, which may or may not be necessary, I don't know, they're not going to kill any, but I know that.
You give them an opportunity to propose an alternative to the project.
So, to make my motion, Bonnie, can you tell us somewhere early January where we have time for a meeting?
If the Commission would consider continuing to a date uncertain, and that would allow us to renotice the project, so that everybody's aware, and then also Norm can let us know when he's ready, and we can get prepared, that would, I think that's better practice than we don't end up with another continuance.
The only reason I want to question Norm is, nobody else is here, so there isn't a huge clamor to be renoticed.
First of all, I will, I think removing the piles would be the greatest environmentally damaging alternative at this point, at this point. So I would try and look for a way to mitigate the concerns that I've heard here tonight. Second, with regard to the fourteen piles, I'd look closely at those, they will not affect wave uprush, and I need to figure out exactly how important those are to protect the house. I know from a planar pseudostatic point, they're necessary to prevent the entire house from going, but there may be alternatives to that, that I'd really like to consider.
Sort of a date uncertain, Norm, is that, do you want a date uncertain, or do you want it to set for a particular date?
Towards the end of January, I think would be a good thing.
Do you have any objection to having it go to a date uncertain? You would require that the matter be renoticed, but as John says, it's not a matter of-
Yeah, I'd rather have a specific date.
You'd rather have a specific date, all right, Bonnie, can you give us a specific date?
Can we make it the first meeting in February?
The first meeting in February would be February third, based on the calendar that you're going to be looking at later.
And then he can make another, if he can't make it by then, he can ask for another continuance, so I'm going to make a motion to continue to February third.
That's my only plea, I guess, is just that when staff prepares a whole report and publishes all this stuff, and then it just makes all these arrangements, and then we have to do it again, it just adds to what, you know, we already have going on.
John, can I?
I have one favor as well before we vote, but go ahead.
From my perspective, look, we're not going to require them to pull the piles out, it's not going to happen. Right, I mean, I think he's absolutely correct, I mean, to me, the big, the piles are in, we've done that, to me, it's decision, the problem to me is the decision process that got us to putting the piles in, so it's, my case is, you know, vote this down, send it to the City Council, make them come up with a policy that says, is this what we want to do in the future? If it is, Norm's in good shape, if it isn't, somebody should say that, so if it ever happens again-
So you're arguing that the motion to continue should be denied?
Yeah, I would vote, I'd vote it down, send it to, let them take it as a City Council, let's get it solved.
I didn't get a second to make a motion.
Norm has asked for a continuance, it's typically that we, when a situation like this arises-
I'll give him a continuance, but I'm just saying, to me, the simpler path is, it's in, you're not going to pull them out, let's get a decision that says in the future, what the hell are we going to do?
I get that, but, all right, so John, you had a motion?
I had a motion, and I agree with you, that if the applicant asks for a continuance, we usually do, so-
Is your motion to a date certain?
February third, or the first meeting in February, if determined, a different date.
And I want to ask a favor, if I may, Chair, if we have an expert here on, who has a lot of, you know, experience in this space, maybe just to kind of address some of Steve's thoughts, if Mark could take a minute to explain just kind of what the options are, like, if we continued with this concept of these, you know, these types of piles, or, you know, what the coast would look like if we put them in or not, I don't know, I just thought it might be informative.
Well, you know, that's really not before us.
I'd like to, if you have a minute, if you could, Mark, just to kind of describe, you've heard the debate we've been having, you know, the concept of a ton of piles all along the coast versus what the coast would look like with none of this type of protection.
So, Chris, I'm not understanding the question, so.
Sorry. So, the discussion, the concern that Steve has had, is that, you know, if we visualize having hundreds of properties with these piles, what would the coastline look like in, say, thirty, fifty, sixty years, versus if nothing is done, kind of what, just scenarios from your experience, what you could expect?
Well, first of all, we've done a lot of exploration along cliffside, and what happens is, in this part of the coastline, it rotates around, and so you have some adverse geology, for the most part, from Point Doom to maybe two or three houses to the, what would that be, the west, you have, basically, the geology's going back in, so when we run it, we're having, we're having pretty good stability, and so it's not a problem in those areas. We have kind of a localized geology issue, so you have, you have the, towards that entrance where that creek is, you have daylighted bedding concerns, but you also have some daylighted bedding concerns in apparent dip directions towards the coast, that's why they're not, it's not calcing stable, so it's not 1.5, it's not 1.0 for seismic, so it's relatively a local area problem, so your concerns of doing the whole beach, I don't think are warranted, it's, this is a, kind of a localized area.
Let me just comment on that. It goes, it waves down the cliff, right at Streisand's property goes straight up, okay? The strata, it just turns straight ninety degrees, and then it tapers back down again, so it's all over the place on those bluffs.
So I guess, I guess then, to kind of address what your concern is, do you have as much of a concern if it's not, you know, because the caution I have is, do we want to use this case as an example to kind of bring the City Council when we don't really have a full picture for them, or should this be considered separately, you know?
This seems a pretty clear picture to me, I'm going to have, I got twenty piles put in, I mean, and if that's the path we're going to take, I mean, I'm not happy with it, but that may be what everybody else wants to do.
But I guess my point is that if we don't have the context of how many other properties would likely need similar protection-
I don't know how you find that out until they start falling.
And Chris, I want to point out, these areas, right around there, it's hard sandstone, you get down to the, to down where Kelly Meyer's house is, half mile down the beach, it's soft mush, and then you get up to Nicholas Beach, it's either hard sandstone or soft mush.
Okay, before this wanders off any further into the weeds, we've got a motion to continue this matter, and to a date certain, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that for a vote.
Okay.
Can I just point out that if we send it up to Council with a denial, that would also give Norm the same amount of time to work out whatever he needs to work out.
All right.
I want to point out that Council doesn't tend to spend a whole lot of time thinking about things.
Whatever Norm wants, if Norm wants a continuance, I think we got to give it.
Okay, let's take a vote on it then, can we get a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes item 4A. You want a break? All right, we're going to have a ten, it's really not ten, twelve, is it? We're going to take a ten-minute break, we'll be back at nine twenty-two. We'll be back at 9:22. Okay. We're ready to call the meeting of, um, November 4 back into session. We're at item, uh, agenda item 5A. This is the coastal development permit 18-033. This is for the application of the, um, tiger, the, the alligator teeth and the parking gate up at, um, near Point Doom State Beach and the nature preserve. Have we got a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The next item on the agenda is for a coastal development permit for a project located at 29300.5 Cliffside Drive. This project is also a capital improvement project. The property is located within the Cliffside Drive public right-of-way adjacent to the Point Doom State Beach and Nature Preserve. The proposed project, the proposed scope of work is as follows. It calls for the installation of a new vehicular gate at the entry of the existing parking area, installation of alligator teeth, traffic spikes located at the exit of the existing parking area, and additional signage. Here we have a site plan, uh, which shows the existing eight parking spaces, which includes two, um, ADA compliant parking spaces. And then I have located the entry to the left of the site plan. And right below it, I have a elevation of the proposed vehicular gate. And then to the right, I have, um, labeled the exit. And right below it, we have a rendering of the proposed traffic spikes. I also did call our Assistant Public Works Director, Adam Chase, to be present for this meeting so that he can address any questions regarding the configuration and the installation of the actual project, since this is gonna become a capital improvement project overseen by Public Works. And here, I just wanted to include this, um, slide, which calls out for the existing signage, which states that no parking, no parking sunset to sunrise. Currently, the subject parking is being restricted by existing signage only. The proposed vehicular gate at the entry and alligator teeth at the exit of the existing public parking area will help enforce the existing no parking sunset to sunrise parking restriction. The project will not affect the existing lawful use of public parking, and no public parking will be lost as part of this project. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 19-71, approving the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Um, disclosures. Chris?
None.
I mean, I've driven past it, but that's... I spoke to Don Schmitz this afternoon to give me a phone call, so we did, had a brief conversation.
John?
Uh, I did talk to Richard Malika, had some questions this afternoon about the configuration of the lot and who was gonna open and close it. He didn't have the answers. He was supposed to get it tonight.
Commissioner Uring, did you learn anything in your conversation with Mr. Schmitz that's not in the staff report?
Greg?
I spoke with Don Schmitz. I also separately went and visited the site just to reconfirm my understanding of it. And, um, we talked about a few sort of technical, physical things that might want to be changed. But it's not in the report, but, uh, I suppose we'll get to it in the conversation.
If there's something that wasn't in the report that you learned about the project, you should share it now so it can be commented on by anybody that's speaking tonight.
Um, okay, yes. I learned in visiting the site that the alligator teeth would be, one edge of it would be within 25 feet of the closest parking space, which is approximately one parking space away from this space. And that when you're doing a parallel parking move, you pull up into the space in front of you, which in this case would be the red hash area at the east end of the lot. If you were a little bit sloppy and pulled up a little bit too far, you'd catch your front left wheel on the alligator teeth. That led to some discussion about maybe figuring out a way to extend the bay a little bit so that the teeth weren't quite as close to the first parking space. And also, I noticed on, probably nobody else would have noticed, but on the plan, in very, very tiny print, it says that back where the gate needs to be, uh, there has to be a turning radius for a paramedic van. They called the fire department in Calabasas. That's not something they have a plan, uh, they accommodate for. They only, uh, do the 32-foot required for a big, a truck. And, uh, so there was some speculation, Don and I had, maybe it was State Parks or the lifeguard or somebody else saying they needed something smaller. The concern was maybe the gate might bisect a corner of that turning radius. I think probably that's not an issue, but I wanted to see some, some numbers and just, you know, some, some diagram maybe showing that, whether it is a problem or not.
John?
I just forgot to mention that, uh, about 16 years ago or so, I went to a whole bunch of hearings on boulders and parking and parking spaces and all this kind of stuff.
Yeah, I suppose I should remember that I was on the council at the time that we put those boulders there and got us itself in a lot of trouble with the coastal commission. I went there today to, to confirm my memory of what the signs looked like. I also had a conversation with Don Schmitz, brief conversation with Don Schmitz yesterday at another event. And just in passing, it has nothing to do with this particular case, but I walked out and, and walked down the staircase that leads to the beach. I, I know that we approved a, a project for them to replace that staircase. I wish they'd get on it. That thing is a death trap. It's criminal negligence to allow that thing to continue to exist. Absolutely, somebody's gonna get seriously hurt and the state's gonna say, "Who, us?" So, anyway. All right, let's open the sta, the, now, a question about, about, um, who represent...
I'm sorry, my, this iPad is... This iPad is talking at me. Can we figure out a way to shut up?
Access to microphone not allowed. Okay. The, uh, the, the question arises, it's, this is the city's project, so who, is there a, is there a staff presentation today? Is, 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 or is everybody just limited to three minutes?
Um, well, that's a good question. Basically, the staff report is the, was the presentation.
The staff report?
So there's, there's not a separate presentation, although, um, Adam Chase is here from Public Works and can speak in any more detail about it. And as you, as you probably recall, this, the genesis of this project was, um, was an outgrowth of, um, the State Parks project and some neighbors, um, having concerns about the, uh, recurrence of people parking after hours in this location. And the neighbors offered to construct this gate and everything. Since it's in the city right-of-way, the city council, um, elected to take it on as a capital improvements project and with the direction of staff to seek reimbursement from the neighbors who proposed it in the first place.
Microphone? Microphone?
Um, my thinking is that Mr. Schmitz is sort of the surrogate, um, applicant's, um, advocate. And I'm gonna leave it up to the commission whether you want to grant 15 minutes or should he be limited to three. So let me have your, your thoughts on it. Three?
Three. Three.
Three's good, if you're ready.
Plenty of questions.
Okay, then first...
Do I hear five?
We, we, we can ask him questions afterwards. We've got three speakers. The first is Brian Merrick. Brian, come on up.
Question, three, two, how much time? How much time? Okay. All right. Thank you, commissioners, for, uh, the opportunity to speak. I am not affiliated with any of this, but I am in favor of it. Uh, I've lived, born and raised right, uh, adjacent to this area here. And, um, it is, uh, basically a big state park in the middle of a residential area. And, um, there is all kinds of things that go on over there at night, I can attest to. There is, uh, if you look around tonight, do you see anybody from State Parks here? No, they're not here. It's the same amount of people you, State Parks, you'd see at, at Point Doom. So there's no enforcement out there. There's nothing going on out there. Uh, it's just free-for-all. And in a couple of ways, it's public safety, but it's also a preservation thing. This place is getting overrun with people. The stairway, as you admit, is, is crazy. It's deadly. And, um, there, you're not restricting any kind of use of the beach. You're just closing off a parking space that already has parking signs that say sunset to sunrise, no parking. About four years ago, maybe five years ago, uh, around 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, sheriffs driving around our block, lock your door, shelter in place, we're going after a criminal. There was somebody out there that had a warrant and they chased him and he went into the bushes. I think he, he came across, maybe it was Mary Ann's property, I'm not sure. Anyhow, that kind of stuff goes on. I got a picture on my phone, which I would show you if you want to see it, but on October 18th of 2019, so just a couple of weeks ago, um, took a morning walk out there to check the surf, there's a fire pit, bunch of beers just laying around. There's a fire, they, they, they had a fire up on Big Doom. So, um, there's just no enforcement out there, and this would help to eliminate that aspect of it. It's not blocking the walkway, it's not doing anything. And then preservation, there's just so much going on over there, so many people. It's the mid, like I said, it's a state park. It's a beautiful, beautiful place, and I think that everyone should enjoy it. So I'm not advocating any kind of restriction. This gate basically just shuts it off so that it follows the signs because State Parks is not there. They're a bad partner in this whole thing. They don't do anything over there. As you can see, you'll walk around and see the whole place is falling apart and they're not doing a darn thing out there. And the sheriffs don't do that. That's, when's the last time, other than volunteers on patrol, that they write tickets or anything like that? So this would just help with that enforcement as well as preservation, and I'm strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Schmitz. Who has a very detailed slideshow.
Very short. And before we get started, just a, a brief second to whine, we did, uh, pay the application fee and fill this all out. If you guys could be a little bit more generous in three minutes, I'll still try to move it along. So for the record, Don Schmitz, on behalf of Friends of Point Doom, uh, you are intimately, all of you, uh, familiar with the subject property, some of you more than you wish to be from its lengthy history. You know that the no parking signs up and down Cliffside are all legal, permitted, part of the settlement agreement with the coastal commission. You are also aware that the parking restrictions within the parking lot, that it be closed from sunset till sunrise, the nighttime hours, was part of the settlement agreement with the coastal commission as well. As shown here on the slide, the city may prohibit parking in these parking spaces between sunset and sunrise daily. That's been the law for this parking lot for close to 20 years now. The city has utterly failed. The city's tried. We've tried to get the sheriff's department out there. And the voluminous documentation, which you're all familiar with, uh, that has been submitted to the city, but also anecdotally, just from you being members of this community, you know this is a very big problem for the people that live in the area. So the solution is to put in a gate. And this gate is gonna be a whopping two feet, nine inches in height. It's not gonna be dramatic. This is just a graphic exhibit. Uh, we did put together the plans, we, uh, showed the alligator teeth, which by the way was the idea of Craig Sapp. When I first started, uh, having a problem with this, I suggested two gates, and this is much more logical because people in the parking lot will still be able to get out. Uh, Commissioner Hill, in regards to the exact location of where those teeth should be, I, uh, we talked about this, I, you know, I think you raised a legitimate issue. I'll, I'll leave it up to Public Works and you guys to hash out the exact location on where those alligator teeth need to be. But this is, as referenced in the staff report, an efficient way for us to enforce the existing standards for when that parking lot is supposed to be open. And as the staff report reflects this, but it also, I'm gonna draw your attention to LUP policy, uh, 2.73, maximum public access in a manner which minimizes conflict with adjacent uses. That's the neighborhood. That's the law. That's the local coastal program that we have. And what has been demonstrated on close to 20 years is just the signs are not enough to respect and protect the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, the staff report goes on to say that enhancing enforcement of the allowed parking yards will help ensure the preserve is used during the intended daylight hours. I want to remind you of a couple of things. That the EIR and the coastal development permit specifies that the beautiful new vertical access way, which we don't have yet, is to be closed during nighttime hours. That was the testimony of Craig Sapp. That was the findings that you adopted. I believe it was Commissioner Mazza that asked him, "Are you putting a gate on it?" Well, no. And so what we do know is that people come in at nighttime, they park in this area, they break out the ice chest, they go off the trails, and somebody's gonna go off the side of the cliff. We do have to have some level of control over this parking lot. So the project is conditioned, will comply with all the applicable state laws and regulations. My time is up. I'll stop there, and I do hope you have some salient and applicable...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give him another two minutes.
Well, you know what, John? We're good. I think you, I think you get the point. I appreciate that, sir, very much. But, uh, I, I will leave you with one other point. We had a disagreement, uh, Friends of Point Doom, myself and you, in regards to what the appropriate entitlement vehicle was for this. We thought this should be a condition on the CDP for the new vertical access way. You disagreed, and I'd say we agree to disagree, but it doesn't work that way. You're the final word in the city council... You're the final word, and the city council also came to that conclusion. But we were directed to submit a separate coastal development permit for this, which is what we've done. It's taken a long time. We had this little thing called the Woolsey Fire, which of course took priority, but it's before you tonight, and I think it's worthy of your approval.
Very much. Mary Ann Riggins is next.
I've spoken numerous times about this gate. I welcome this gate. This gate is needed. It is disturbing to have people park there all hours of the night, doing noisy items. We just don't get the enjoyment of our residential community. I find it, I know there've been comments by Coastal Commission with regards to this. I find it ironic that this is the one parking lot in Malibu for public access that either the county, the state controls, that there is no, every other place has a gate. You go to El Matador, you go to La Prietra, you go to Zuma, you go to Westward, you go to Surf Rider, every single parking lot, they have a gate. It closes at night. We're asking for the same thing within our residential neighborhood. We deserve to have some quiet overnight. It's not impeding people being able to use the park after dark if that's what the Coastal Commission wants. People can still go there. They can access it through Westward Beach, they can ask, access it through surface streets. It's still available. All we're asking is that we have some time to enjoy our quiet neighborhood overnight and not be disturbed by people illegally parking. We don't have enforcement there. The sheriff is not available to do it. The volunteers on patrol do a fabulous job, but they're volunteers. They're only there when they have volunteer time. So, I'm just hoping this can move forward and this can be solved as simply and easily as possible, and we can have our quiet neighborhood overnight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to comment on this item? Hearing none, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna bring it back to the commission table. And Steve, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just, I've got two points with this. One, I, I've hiked through Solstice Canyon for years, and up until about a year and a half ago, there, there was, the ranger came in every morning and locked or opened the gate and closed it at sunset, and some days he was on time, some days he wasn't, some days either his car broke down, he got sick, overslept, and what happened was people showed up at sunrise, and if they couldn't get in the gate, they just parked anywhere because they were gonna go hiking, all right? And I'm afraid the same thing's gonna happen up there if, if, because I don't know who's responsible for getting up every morning and opening that gate for him. And what Solstice Canyon did, they put in an automatic gate, all right? I mean, it opens at sunrise, closes at sunset automatically, does, it's working like a charm. So, I would suggest that what we want to do with this one is do the same thing, put an automatic gate in there. We don't have to worry about someone showing up to open or close it, and it'll solve a huge problem. And the only other thing is, inside the resolution, there's nothing in there that says that some other group is gonna pay for this thing. And I don't know if we need that as part of our resolution or not, but I'll leave that up to the other commissioners.
I want to point out, page, I think it's, yeah, the resolution number sixteen, I think that could be modified. No, it only talks about that it will be operated by the city in accordance with ours. Maybe it could say with an automated gate.
Yeah.
Something like that, so we could just modify that whole condition.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a threshold question of Trevor. We got these letters from Madeline Glickfeld and Sarawan, talking about all the settlement and the whole history, and just quote one line from her, "You tell me if this is true or not." She wrote, "That legal settlement is still in effect and cannot be altered by a coastal permit." I mean, it sounds like, I don't, I think that's not true, but why, you know, these are reasonably high-powered people, or they should be. Why, why are we getting this from them now?
Well, a couple of issues on this. Number one, whether it's compliance with the settlement agreement or not is not before the commission here. That'd be an issue the city council could take up if they have concerns about running into issues with compliance with the settlement agreement, but there's nothing in the settlement agreement that prohibits this. There, there's, this is not a, it's a kind of changing in the hours of operation of when parking is allowed in the area. There was some discussion about the shuttle buses, that's not really part of this as well, but the city, you know, ran those buses for ten years with nobody on them and complied with its obligations under the settlement agreement. So, I don't see any obstacle to this project in the--
Well, even if there's a question as to whether or not the city complied with its obligations under that, under, with the bus and twenty-two parking spaces, et cetera, and I think there may be a valid question there, I don't know, you're saying that that's not on the table regardless.
No, you, you have here is, is you have an application whether they make the findings for the coastal development permit that's been applied for. Whether the city has, you know, alternative obligations under a settlement agreement would not be something that's brought to the commission here to determine compliance.
Right, thank you.
I think that what I took away from, from those letters was, was, I, I just had a very difficult time understanding the argument because, because we're not changing anything to do with the hours, we're not changing anything to do with the number of parking spaces. All this is, is an enforcement enhancement, and it's the same, I guess the argument would be if we parked a cop car there at sunset, that, that would somehow deprive people of coastal access. I mean, it just makes no sense.
That's exactly the point, is if for some reason you felt that it, that, you know, this gate would somehow deter people from actually parking in the lot, maybe that would have some kind of access issue, but that's--
That's the only thing I can think of, is that somehow it's a, it's a psychological barrier that people will have, you know, be frightened, frightened to go through the gate. However, yes, great.
Just on that note, there, in the staff report at forty-six, there is a note that, and the changing of signage of any sort requires concurrence by State Parks and Rack. They have to sign off any change, so whatever we order, they still have to weigh in on.
Reposing changing any signs?
Wasn't that part of it, that there would be more signs saying like, careful, don't back up over the alligator teeth, or, you know?
Okay, well, let me, let me ask Trevor. What does Coastal say? Have there been any comments from Coastal?
The, the written letters is all that we've gotten.
And they objected. Yeah, and so the only, you know, this, this idea that we don't have to think about what Coastal's gonna do to us was the same argument when they put the boulders in, and it cost the city many millions of dollars. So, in my mind, part of this assumption of cost is gonna be assumption of legal cost because they're talking a twenty-two, twenty-two parking space parking lot and all kinds of crazy stuff. It cost us a minimum of three million dollars last time we put the boulders in, and theoretically, quote, we were right, but it cost us three million dollars. And I live on Point Doom, I don't want somebody tearing down their house to put in the parking lot either. So, I, I'm, it may be it's done of our business, but there's abundance of caution in my mind, and one of the most important things is what Steve brought up. There's a thing in surfing called dawn patrol, and I will guarantee you, every morning there's surf, there's guys cruising that, that, looking for a parking space, and they aren't stupid The minute we don't open that gate for dawn patrol and there's a swell, we're gonna turn in. That's, that's a certainty.
So, maybe we're looking for a motion that, that approves the staff recommendation with a couple of changes, perhaps an automatic opening gate, something like that. Are there other, are there other suggestions that commissioners want to make besides that?
Well, I, I have a couple of questions on the, on the physical portion of it, but I think we have to have a legal assumption of liability also, and I think we have to consider, whatever we have to consider as far as when this goes to court, what do we do?
If I can ask a question, John?
Sure.
Because, sorry--
Go ahead.
If I may, the, the letter from Coastal says, "Staff continues to recommend that the project staff report include additional analysis in order to demonstrate conformance with public access policies in the Malibu LCP." So, are you really saying then, has staff addressed the Coastal Commission's exact concerns so that we don't have the risk you're talking about?
I would like to have the Coastal Commission say, see, this was a court settlement. It wasn't decided by the Coastal Commission, decided by our lawyers and their lawyers. And so, just to go back to court costs a bunch of money, if they want to go back to court. I don't know how that works, Trevor, but I assume it costs a bunch of money, and your firm does well. So, I would want, wanna, I would want to make some kind of decision that gets passed by them before we approve it, because the penalties are huge here.
Yeah, that's a decision for the council in terms of the agreement, in terms of the cost sharing with them.
Okay, well, then, let me ask you a couple of questions about the project itself.
While you're looking those up, I did ask a couple of things that haven't fully been answered yet about, Mr. Schmitz did suggest that Public Works could look at elongating the front of the bay so that, that the teeth wouldn't be so close to the first spot. Also, what about the question about, does that gate bisect that turning radius in any way or not?
I also just want to remind the commission that Adam Chases here from Public Works--
Oh, okay.
Since it's a capital improvements project, he can address--
The question I asked of Don Schmitz, did he reflect that back to you about the turning radius at the front of the bay?
Yeah, maybe I, I can help at the, where the traffic spikes at, at that exit. Currently, the way it's placed on the plans, it's, it's quite optimal. There's a, a little bit of a trade-off you're talking about with the no parking, the chevrons, the red stripe, where you're, you're kind of talking about how a vehicle would have to pull up and parallel park and, and back into a spot. The issue with traffic spikes, the vehicle needs to exit at a ninety-degree perpendicular to minimize any potential damage to the tread or the sidewall of a tire. So, if that's not put in an optimal location, it potentially could cause some minor damage to tires, even though they're going, they're exiting the way they're supposed to exit. The other issue is if, if we change any portion or elongate like another ten feet or expand the median and maybe meander the sidewalk a little bit, the issue with that is when you, when you look left to see oncoming vehicles, you lose that angle. So, there's an, there's an optimal angle that you like to see when you turn left and look, and it could potentially open up another safety issue, the less of that angle that becomes, because you're, you're coming, you're, you would be basically kind of shaving off the curve, and so that'd be another issue.
If, could you keep it at the same angle, but move it forward ten feet? Because given that you're already getting into the curb there to redo the whole drainage system and a substantial amount of reworking, you're taking that all apart anyway, so why not just push that geometry ten feet further forward to give a little margin for error for the, you know, the one in a hundred drivers who's gonna be a little sloppy on the parallel park?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think anything's possible to make this, to, to take a look in and actually put some vehicle templates on there.
John wants to--
Yeah. Do you, do you have Don's slides?
No, I don't.
We have some extras. I know, can you, Don, can you hand him one? When you get it, I'd like to have you look at the second page, which says parking issues, actually both pages that say parking issues. And it shows, you'll see on the second page, it says, it has two red dots, three red dots, but two are at the end where you exit. And if you look at the page that shows where the spikes are, they come off of that median. That would be a thing that says solution, alligator teeth. And it looks to me like three cars are eliminated, if you look at those. Either, either one or two is wrong.
Sure, I mean, they're, they're parking in a no parking spot, so there's no enforcement. The, the existing parking, there's, there's eight regular vehicle stalls and two ADA stalls, and there's no change in any configuration in striping anywhere on this project.
Okay, so those are just poorly drawn. But you say it can't be at an angle, so would that eliminate the last space? Because if you count the eighteen, it's, it goes right through the middle of the car. Or the ten, I mean.
Sure.
The two ADA's in the--
If you look at the, maybe the staff report may have the site plan up, but the last part, it's, the parking stalls are labeled, it says P eight, and then it has the red, red curb, and then the chevrons. So, they're, and it's, and it's labeled as thirty-five feet. It says no parking.
So, these, these spaces are, what, twenty feet long?
They're approximately twenty feet long.
Okay, what, what page is that on?
There's, there's no change from the existing on how it's--
One thirty-seven.
It's twenty-two feet. Twenty-two feet long.
Twenty-two feet, twenty-two feet, which is code.
Where, where is it? Can you show me the drawing which page it's on?
One thirty-seven of the staff report.
One thirty, no wonder I couldn't find it.
It's, it's way at the back.
It's labeled on P five on the, on below, twenty-two by eight.
Okay, yeah, one thirty-seven. Well, there's just numbers, and so you're saying way before, it looks like twenty, thirty feet before the, the exit, it's red.
That's correct. There's no change.
That's correct, so, so these, these, if you count the cars, and, and this is a photograph--
They're illegally parking.
I measured it on site. The, the red hash is, is, from the beginning to the edge of where the teeth would start, it's twenty-five feet. So, it's a little bit longer than a regular parking space, and that was my concern, that it doesn't leave quite enough margin for a standard parallel parking move, like, you know, most of the time it's fine, but if you could push it out ten feet, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, it, it's kind of like it's a fifty-fifty on where's the optimal placement of the traffic spikes, and we keep pushing and move the project a little bit more, we might have some safety issues, so it's a balancing act on really where this, where the traffic spikes and--
I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I'm gonna disagree. I don't think that's a safety issue because you can put the spikes at the exact angle that you need them, but just push that whole assembly out ten more feet, and it, that would mean doing a little bit of cut in the curb to sort of open up some space on the curb side, but you're doing that anyway because you're redoing that whole drainage thing there, so you're taking that apart anyway, so you might as well just rebuild it with a little more space.
So, the only other issue, other two issues, right in that area, it's a little bit more of a vertical, so there may be vehicles prone to roll backwards as they're waiting, depending on what type of vehicle someone may be driving, and again, just turning to the left, so if there's any, if, if you're gonna expand the concrete median to kind of give a little bit more space, that's my only concern, is, is the configuration on narrowing down the throat width on the exit.
Okay, we're not gonna be able to, to, to actually define the exact configuration sitting here at the table, and maybe what you want to do is, is condition the project to being approved by Public Works with the assurance that no parking spaces will be reduced or lost because that would violate the agreement that we had, something along those lines. Is, is anybody ready to put forward a motion yet? Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
My motion would be that, that we approved staff recommendation, with the exception that there's, there should be an automatic gate that opens at sunrise, that closes at sunset, and that we should have some language in the resolution that talks about who's gonna pay for this.
And, and I would like to have that language also include legal costs.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can't, there's no nexus between making them pay for it and the, and the effect of this project on the environment. That's a, an issue that's dealt with between the city and the city council about reimbursement directly with the applicant.
And the, the council did make that part of their specific direction to staff when they added this as a capital improvements project.
Is there an agreement in place, signed?
The agreement, I don't believe is in place at this time, but that's the direction from council, so--
So, it'll be--
So it'll be in place before it's brought to the council?
So we can put it in the resolution.
No.
It's a matter for the, it's a matter for the council.
It's not a condition of the permit. It's the council's decide to move forward with the project or not based on the reimbursement situation. It's a city project, they would control it.
We don't make findings about who's going to make, who's going to pay.
And I'll stick with just the putting the automatic gate in.
Commissioner Euring, would this reflect?
And perhaps making sure that the precise alignment of both the gate and the tiger teeth are are approved by Public Works and ensuring that no parking spaces are reduced or lost.
I'll accept that.
And confirming that there is space for the turning radius of the emergency vehicle as indicated on the plan? That the gate won't bisect that?
You ready to accept that too, Steve?
I'll accept, I mean, I assume Public Works is going to do their job, but if that's important to get it done, I'll accept that.
So I'll second the motion. Trevor, you got the motion?
Yeah, and so I think the motion would be staff's recommendation. And then Commissioner Euring, would this reflect your change to condition sixteen? The last sentence could be changed to the vehicular gate shall be operated by the city and a gate that automatically opens in accordance with the existing allowed hours of parking between sunrise and sunset?
That'll work.
And then also direct Public Works to look at the exact setup of the turning radius and the location of the alligator teeth to optimize parking and safety concerns? Would that reflect?
So the turning radius at the entrance to it and the alligator teeth at the exit.
I think, Adam, do you understand?
That's your motion, Steve?
Yes.
All right, I'll accept that as the secondor.
And I do have a question before we get to the vote, just briefly.
We're now open for discussion of the motion.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify from someone on staff, just has there been follow up with Coastal on the specifics they called out in their letter? Because I'm kind of aligning with John, I just want to make sure at least we're addressing that. And should we note that in our staff report so that we address their concerns directly? Maybe DTR, if you have any feedback there? Sorry, so in the letter dated ten thirty-one, they specifically state we should review LUP two dot twenty-seven and two ninety-six, those details. Have we addressed what their concerns are there?
We believe that we've addressed all of the policy issues in the land use plan.
Okay, I think two point two seven deals with the removal of parking, and there's no parking being removed in this situation. It's just a gate being put up. And I can't remember what the second section.
I couldn't really find it.
The other one, I believe the other one deals with compliance with the.
With the settlement agreement, and I don't see any obstacles in the settlement agreement at this point.
If you're comfortable there, then I'm okay.
I go back to Jeff, I mean, all the letters I read, I didn't understand what the objection was since we're not really restricting anybody from going there, so.
As long as it's open, can I ask Trevor a question?
I just, before you vote, I did want to mention that Public Works has some concerns about an automatic gate. And I just wanted to make sure that you can hear from Adam before you get to that.
Okay, I mean, there's give and take, but we don't have automatic gates at our parks. Speaking with our community services director, who has staff open up gates in the morning and then has a contract company close the gates at night. This would be something new, that just operations and maintenance, additional cost to be considered for automatic gates, that's all.
Like I said, I mean, my experience has been if that gate's not open, the people are going to come there. And if they can't park there, they will find some place to park. And then you'll have sheriffs issuing tickets, and then you're going to have the Coastal Commission crawling all over you. You do not want to have that happen. If you got a question about how to put automatic gates in, talk to the guys who are running Solstice Canyon because they did it and it works like a charm. So that could be done.
I want to comment on that too. When we opened the dog park, the guy didn't open the gates every morning. Okay, all you need is one morning here, it's two million bucks. It's a really big deal. A really big deal not to open that gate.
I think if staff has concerns about it or things that need to be adjusted, they can take it up with the city council. This is the city council's project, and the city council's going to do with it as they choose.
They can take our requirement off if they want, I want to put it on.
City council, they outrank us, see?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we can't.
They just have final say.
Hi, Trevor. Is there any way? In my mind, if this ends up costing three million dollars, we made a huge mistake. Is there any way to have a fail safe? Say it's suspended upon suit or something like that? Because, you know, we paid, what, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for ten years for a bus that nobody rode?
This is a project in the city right away, so the city could choose to not build it if they want to. This is just an approval that allows the city to put this in place. They're not required to put it in place. If the city makes a decision that they don't want to, for whatever reason, they don't want to do it, they don't have to go forward with it. And also in terms of what that agreement would say with the neighbors in terms of indemnity situation, that's for the council to decide, you know, what's appropriate and what they're willing to accept.
Now, what is the process of not going forward?
Let me just remind you also.
Usually with bureaucracies, you start something, you have to have some way to stop it.
This CDP is appealable to the Coastal Commission, and if the Coastal Commission has an objection to it, it would probably be cheaper for them to just appeal it to themselves rather than litigate over it anyway.
Everyone clear on the motion?
You're happy with your pieces included?
Can you just briefly say what you mean?
Sure, the motion is to approve staff's recommendation with the following change to condition sixteen. And that'd be the last sentence of that one would say the vehicular access, the vehicular gate shall be operated by the city and a gate that automatically opens in accordance with the existing allowed hours of parking between sunrise and sunset. And you've also directed Public Works to carefully look at the turning radius issue at the entrance and also the optimal location of the tiger teeth and any other further adjustments need to be made to ensure parking is safe and no spaces are lost.
Trevor, I mean, just your wording said that we've got to have somebody make sure the gate is open. The automatic gates should open and close by itself. If you got that covered, I'm not.
Yep, operated by the city and a gate that automatically opens.
And closes.
Okay.
Get it both sides.
Opens and closes in accordance with the existing hours of operation.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Oh, is that me? Yes, I thought I voted last.
No, you made the motion.
You seconded.
Oh, I was trying, okay.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Are you guys going to make it to the CUP? We have two items and it's ten oh seven. Yeah, it's ten oh seven.
Second, I'm trying to get my. Okay, so that was five A, and now we're on to five B, right?
It would be really important to get to item eight A regarding the calendar also.
I move we do eight A, it doesn't take a minute.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we're taking up item eight A, which is the meeting calendar. I'm going to start off my own, Commissioner Hill had a suggestion that he brought up several meetings ago about changing our meeting date from Monday to Tuesday. And I know it's something that staff would like to see. It gives additional time for questions to be answered. Hopefully, if Commissioner's questions can be responded to, then maybe the questions that take place during the meeting will be abbreviated. And so I would like to see whether there's any support for pushing that forward, so the meet on Tuesday instead of on Monday.
I would strenuously object, and I think it should be put on the calendar to do that. The reason we switched, and it took a lot of work to switch, was because we were getting zero press because of their deadlines. Now, at least we have one newspaper and sometimes two that cover us. And it's important for the public to know what we're doing. We're not like every other commission, it actually affects them.
Well, I agree with you. At the time that it was done, I think the staff, the paper coverage was important. But, you know, things have changed a lot in the sense we're now live on TV. We're now, almost anybody can cover us anytime they want to see us. And I think that the coverage that I see, at least in the local papers, is, well, never mind. So anyway, I just want to see whether there's interest at three votes?
I just wanted to add another comment on that. And that is, we get our staff reports late enough. And I want to do my work on weekends. And I want to be ready on Monday. You know, things happen on Mondays. We spend a lot of time doing this, and I'd say a third of the staff reports are late. And all of our comments come in, you know, either Friday night or Monday morning. And now we're going to get them Tuesday morning. And you're killing two business days where, you know, you have a life to live. And it's important that we do things thoroughly.
Okay, I get your point, you don't want, I'm trying to find out whether there's, either the other two of you are interested in making the change or not.
Yeah, I know we had a pretty long discussion on this. I still stand by where we ended up at the Monday, so that's where I prefer Mondays personally.
John, would it help at all to say that the time that the agendas are, that the staff reports are due is still the same Friday ten days before?
No, it wouldn't because.
It would be because it's, that ten days would fall on the weekend, so they'd still have to get it in at the same time.
As you notice, we, one staff, one meeting we had, two or three meetings ago, we had eleven items and we only heard two.
Is there, are you interested in it?
No.
Okay, all right, we're done with the conversation?
Weekends give me a chance to do stuff.
Okay, so now let's go on to the rest of the calendar. What would you like to comment on if there is any comment? Do we have to have a public hearing on this? No?
If somebody submitted a comment.
I have a question. I thought December sixteenth was our holiday. And I don't remember approving that one for this year.
Do you revise schedule?
Yeah, this revised, but we've had extra meetings and all kinds of stuff. And we get a break sometime. And even the council gets a break, but we don't appear to get a break. Two meetings every month, we never get anything off. And in this case, it's December, four days before Christmas. Well, that's canceled.
How does by Thursday get another meeting date, I have two years in a row?
So you want one scratched in July or August also?
Well, you know, I'd like to have a life. It is canceled in two thousand twenty, and it was last year. So I'm fine with the two thousand twenty schedule, I'm not fine with the two thousand nineteen schedule.
You're talking about December sixteenth date?
Yeah.
One of the items that we were hoping to bring back to you at that meeting is the Soho and Nobu project. And there are, there are just a lot of items that need hearings. So that was part of the reason for putting that item back or that meeting back on the calendar. Plus, it's nine days ahead of Christmas, and so we, you know, it didn't look like it was too close to the holiday.
Well, my comment on that is we're a year and a half late, two years late, or four years late, depending on how you look at it. So what's a meeting? Plus, it's, you know, Nobu and Soho is going to be a five hour meeting.
Well, another quick question, did we have a couple of special meetings that aren't listed on the calendar as well for two thousand nineteen? I remember at least one.
Yeah, I mean, you're just looking here basically to approve the December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. We're not here just to memorialize what happened.
No, no, I understood, I just want to, you know, kind of plan it where John is.
And you do have a special meeting coming up?
When's the special?
Wait, no, we don't, we put the pause on.
What's the?
When's the pause, is that December, when's the pause being heard?
November eighteenth, the next meeting.
Okay, so it's not a special meeting, sorry.
Well, we had a couple. So I got to make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty calendar and we eliminate December sixteenth from the two thousand nineteen calendar.
It's currently eliminated, December sixteenth is currently eliminated, so it would put it back, correct? That's what we are proposing.
So it'd be to make no change to the two thousand nineteen schedule, but to approve the two thousand twenty?
That, yes, and just.
That would be my motion.
Just one note on the two thousand twenty calendar, that first meeting in January, the packet would come out around Christmas.
That's better. I made that motion, any second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to item, what, five B?
Five B.
Are you guys going to be able to hear both the CUP and the CDP?
The CUP may be a quick items, that's the offsite wastewater treatment thing if you'd consider.
That's five.
Five C.
C.
Then we don't have to republish the staff report.
All right, is there a motion to take up five C?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to go with item five C. This is the conditional use permit, nineteen dash oh oh seven, this is for the property at twenty-two seven fifty-one and twenty-two seven sixty-one Pacific Coast Highway. Staff report, please.
Waiting for the PowerPoint, here we go. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit for two-two-seven-five-one and two-two-seven-six-one PCH. The properties are located on the north side of Pacific Coast Highway in the Community Commercial Zoning District. Surrounding land uses consist of a mix of residential and commercial uses. Both properties are commercial properties. The subject property located at two-two-seven-five-one PCH is currently the Malibu Country Fried Chicken Restaurant. The project before you consists of a conditional use permit to allow the offsite treatment and disposal of wastewater on an existing sewage easement located at two-two-seven-six-one PCH. The easement has historically been used to treat wastewater for the restaurant located at two-two-seven-five-one, but has not yet received a CUP for the use. The subject CUP will legalize the use that has existed since prior to cityhood. The OWTS, including the subject tank and traffic rated slab, was previously approved in May of two thousand nineteen with a follow up CUP required as a condition of approval. The applicant is required to provide a traffic control and construction management plan as part of the conditions of approval. The applicant will also be working with the property owner at two-two-seven-six-one PCH to establish a construction plan that'll minimize impacts on ingress and egress for the tenants at two-two-seven-six-one PCH. No intensification or changes to the structures located on either property are proposed. Additionally, there is no alternative location on the subject property at two-two-seven-five-one PCH that could accommodate the OWTS components. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number nineteen sixty-three, approving the project as conditioned. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you. Disclosures, please, starting with Chris.
I have none.
None? None. Yeah, I spoke to owner Stephen Hakim, owner of two-two-seven-six-one Above It. He plans to turn that property into a hotel. And that's now on the public record as of the council's STR meeting a week ago. So that may have some relevance.
Okay.
One quick question. By allowing these people to take their wastewater to another property, is somebody else in the city doing, is this a precedent we're setting that other people can jump on, or are people already doing that?
No, we have other properties throughout the city that have done it, and it's in the LIP as one of the, or the MMC actually, for one of the uses for conditional use permits.
Mike, put your, Mike, Mike.
Microphone?
Start the public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing, we've got one speaker, Hans Moper. Hans? Are you here just to answer questions, or do you have a presentation?
Answer questions.
Answer questions, fine. Anybody else want to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, we're going to close the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. John?
This is a CUP. Does this property have a CUP?
Not currently.
Okay, so how can we give a CUP for a restaurant just for its wastewater treatment plant? Usually when we give CUPs for restaurants, we have hours of operation and blah, 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 blah. Service area, everything else. And so, since he has no CUP, and there's a city, um, the city council has directed that CUPs be, they were supposed to be done 20 years after we became a city.
The reason...
And then we passed a...
But, Bonnie?
The, the reason that it isn't, um, a, a CUP for the restaurant itself isn't before you is because they're not changing anything with respect to the restaurant. It's a, it was a failing septic system that was replaced, and it, this is just memorializing this longstanding condition.
Well, let me ask you this...
But if anything changes with the restaurant in terms of intensity or whatever, then it would come back and, and get a CUP.
But the restaurant's gone. They are changing. It's gone, right?
No, I mean, the, uh, the restaurant's been closed for repairs, but we plan to operate it.
They're going to, they're going to sell chicken there?
We're going to sell chicken. Again, the same operator, the people that have been running it aren't. Myself and the owner of the property will be running a restaurant there.
And what kind of restaurant? A chicken restaurant?
Yes.
Like fried chicken type?
Well, the, the, the exact menu isn't...
No, I'm just wondering.
Determined, but yeah.
Trying to get a change of use because we don't have what's, we don't know what's happening.
It'll still be a, a fast service restaurant. It won't be, you know, the use won't change, the intensity of the flow won't change to the septic system.
No delivery?
No delivery to the septic...
Prior restaurant didn't have delivery. Are you having delivery?
Prior restaurant did have delivery. They, they used, um, uh, different social media, um, and did deliver.
But they did, but you're not going to deliver with your own services? You're not going to have a, a...
We're not personally going to go deliver, um, food, no. We'll use social media to, as the...
So are you doing anything at all different than country chicken?
Uh, the menu may change. Menu may change.
So no liquor? No entertainment?
Right now, we don't have a liquor permit.
Anything like that would require coming back for a CUP.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because there is no CUP, so there's no prior use. It's been approved.
No, they, no, there has been a use there since before cityhood, and any changes to that, that previously existing or currently existing use would require, um, them to come and get a CUP.
So if they don't change anything that was never approved...
It just continues to operate.
They continue to do what was never approved forever.
Right.
Except the city council directed whenever you changed use, you had to get a CUP.
It doesn't, it's not changing use, and that's the trigger.
On Nobu didn't change use.
The whole new building.
What?
The whole new building.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's significant development that...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it seems, it just seems strange to me that we give a CUP for a septic tank. CUPs are usually, that's a CDP.
It's, you, the CDP for the septic has already been approved. It's attached to the staff report, and this is taking care of the conditional use permit, which was a condition of the, the CDP for the septic system that you recently approved.
It's required because it's over the other property.
So this is, this is a condition that was imposed.
You remember, John, that there was the, the Norm Haney Rule, which was imposed by the, by the, um, city council years ago, which was to prevent Norm from developing some property down on Sea Level Drive. And the rule was that you could not dispose of your affluent on, except on your own property. And, and, but you could, as long as you had a CUP to do it. And this is what the CUP is about.
Okay, I'm just wondering about, 28 years ago, we said you got to get a CD, CUP for all, all businesses in Malibu that need them. And now we're just doing it for a septic tank. It's just a question of, okay. It's not a big deal, but it just seems weird. But we give a CUP for a septic tank.
All right, so if it's not a big deal, let's see if somebody else has a comment.
I have a comment.
Okay.
We have, we have finding five. Says the proposed use would be compatible with existing and future land uses within the zoning district and the general area in which the proposed use is to be located. Now, talking with Stephen Hakim, he says he's going to put a hotel back there. So the question is compatibility with a future use. Does putting this in now in any way preclude his plan? Or conversely, would, um, would this be considered a, a form of piecemealing towards the realization of his plan? Or how, how does this interact with the future use of that property if it's going to be a hotel and has presumably more OWTS?
This would be a development constraint for the property because it's an, an encumbrance that already exists. We don't know anything about this hotel project. We didn't know any, that there was any plan for that, so that is, there's no way to know that right now.
It is on the public record now, that's all.
Right, I saw it in the comment letter too, but it, without a, an application before us or anything like that to evaluate, they'll, they'll simply have to design around it.
Any other questions? Is there somebody who wishes to make a motion?
I have that wish. I'll, uh, move staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Let's get a roll call. Uh, maybe not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the motion passes.
There are no more.
Thank you very much.
Um, now, it's 11:26, uh, we could start, or 10:26? Can we start a new item, uh, before 10:30? Is that the rule? Okay, fine. We're going to go on to item, um, 5, what? Right, 5B. This is the coastal development permit, 18-003, with a variance and a site plan review and a minor modification. It's an application for a new single-family residence and a guest house at 6361 Seastar Do we have staff report, please?
Yes, sir, and good evening again. Um, as you said, this is CDP number 18013, um, and it has a variance for encroachment into Esha, a site plan review for development on slopes between 3 to 1 and 2 and 1/2 to 1, and a minor modification, um, to reduce the rear yard setback by 20%. The subject lot, as you can see here, is an irregularly shaped, non-beachfront vacant flag lot. And the site is accessed from Seastar Drive by a driveway extending, um, from that road. And what you can see in this image here, um, that is, that curved kind of pe, half of a peace sign looking thing at the bottom of the image, um, that's not Seastar Drive, that's part of the driveway, um, extending from Seastar Drive, um, up to the LA County Flood Control District access easement, um, which takes up the entire flagpole portion of the subject property and, uh, that kind of semicircle wedge that you see there. The large drainage easement is, um, in the southeast corner and is developed currently with a drainage and debris basin, um, with a surrounding fence, and it's managed by the LA County Flood Control District. From the drainage easement, the property slopes up steeply, um, as you can see here, from south-north for about 15 to 30 feet before leveling out. In this image, um, you might be able to see, um, the excavated area, uh, and the related pile of excavated material to the left, and I'll talk about how that came to be in just a minute. Um, you'll also see in the upper right-hand corner, um, of the property, an existing retaining wall, um, uh, which abuts the, um, neighboring property at 6295 Seastar Drive, um, which had been previously understood to be the western boundary of that property. But in fact, the property line, um, extends a little bit beyond, um, that retaining wall, which is proposed to be removed. The project includes, um, a new single-family residence, um, 8,222 square feet, um, total of TDSF, which includes, um, a basement and a second unit. It also includes a swimming pool, a hardscaping, um, driveway, uh, 450 QB cards of non-exempt grading, uh, new septic system and landscaping, and as I mentioned, uh, the variance for encroachment of, um, less than 15 feet into the Esha, um, due to fuel modification, uh, site plan review for construction on slopes between 3 to 1 and 2 and 1/2 to 1, and a minor mod for 20% reduction of the rear yard setback from, um, a little less than 41 feet to a little more than 32 feet. The proposed project, as I said, includes a pool and pool deck facing the west with the driveway and motor court roughly following the western and northern boundaries of the subject property. Um, a guest house is located above the proposed one and two car garages. The proposed, um, and I have to amend what I said previously, they don't have a second unit, they have a guest house. Um, this, um, the basement is located entirely below the first floor living area, and, um, the house is designed to not exceed 18 feet in height at any time. Um, as you can see in these renderings, starting from the driveway, um, this would be, um, going up the driveway and then turning around, um, and you could see, um, let me see if I can figure this out, here? That's the pool, and you're wrapping around, um, and then the motor court would be kind of in, in this area, um, which is facing east. You can see that the residence is designed as a multi-level structure, um, that steps down the gradual slope in order to follow the natural contours of the lot. Um, a single-family residence was previously approved on the subject property by the city in 1994, which, um, at that time, that approval did also include a minor modification to allow for a reduced rear yard setback. And in 1997, the Coastal Commission issued a CDP for a new 28-foot-high, um, 6,000-square-foot single-family residence with a basement, um, that included the same fuel modification zones, um, as what is proposed, um, here. The excavation for the approved residence and the preparation of the approved driveway occurred sometime between 2000 and 2002, before that project was abandoned. Um, and that stockpile of fill is what you, um, saw in that Google screenshot, um, and the excavated area. The proposed residence is designed to take advantage of the excavation, um, which has already taken place, and to avoid encroaching into, um, variance slopes south of the proposed location. And what you can see in this image here is, um, uh, I, in my poor artistry, um, in the yellow is what the site looks like today, um, with the excavated area and the associated excavated material. The pre-existing grade is in blue, and the proposed grade with the house taking advantage of that excavated area is in green. In the story polls, um, images that you can see here, um, the first picture is from the onsite drainage area looking up towards the, that neighboring property. Um, and then the picture on the right is from the existing driveway and a view of that excavated material, that pile. The left-hand image is from the proposed motor court, looking again towards that neighboring property, um, and then looking towards the ocean, um, and you can see the big hole, the excavated area. Uh, there has been an expressed, or concern expressed by the owner of the neighboring property at 6295 Seastar Drive. A second site visit was conducted to assess the impacts to views from that residence. Specifically, they do have a primary view determination from that house. It's facing not quite in the same direction as how these images, or these pictures were taken, um, but the development is not subject to discretionary review for height as it is entirely 18 feet tall or shorter. In addition, um, just to note that moving the development to avoid the requested variance, site plan review, or the minor mod, um, does not affect the views from the proposed, of the proposed development from the neighboring property. It doesn't change how these would appear. No Esha has been identified on the subject property, however, Esha is mapped on the adjacent property to the north, within the, um, 21-acre parcel that has been dedicated in its entirety as open space as part of the original subdivision, uh, for the purpose of preserving seen qualities of the area. As the proposed development is sighted approximately, um, 86 feet from the Esha to the north, the fuel modification zones would extend about 14 and 1/2 feet into that Esha on the subject property, um, from the northwestern corner of the structure, um, which is circled and red here. Given the size and shape of the lot and the location of the Esha, um, no other feasible location exists on the property that would avoid impacts to Esha. As such, staff is recommending approval of the variance as the subject property, um, has also been disturbed before and subject to fuel modification since, uh, roughly 1994. And the project proposes, um, a similar level of encroachment into Esha as, uh, neighboring properties and as the project is previously approved by both the city and the Coastal Commission. Um, and there are conditions available, or available, there are conditions included in the res, resolution to provide mitigation for those unavoidable impacts to Esha, um, and the developable area, developable area is limited to 10,000 square feet. You can see in the, this image here, circled with the dashed areas are the two parts of the development that encroach onto slopes that are steeper, um, or between 3 to 1 and 2 and 1/2 to 1. Although the proposed development is sighted on the flattest portion of the lot, um, in an, in, in the same building pad area as a previously approved development, a small portion of the nook facing south falls over the steep slope to the south, um, and a part of the driveway, uh, encroaches, um, in that circled area. It's not feasible for the driveway to be designed in a way which would maintain the width, um, and the curves required by the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And so, um, the applicant would either be disturbing, um, the slopes that they are proposing here, or variant slopes on the other side. And lastly, because the residence is designed to avoid, again, those steepest parts of the sloth, slope abutting the property to the south, um, a minor modification was, again, requested for this application to reduce the rear yard setback 20% from the required, um, 40.73 feet to 32.5 feet, um, the required setback being shown in the solid line and the reduced setback shown in the dashed line. And this is very similar, um, almost exactly the same as the original approval. In conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of resolution 1969, which approves CDP, um, 1813, including variance, uh, 1939, SPR 1991, and minor mod 18006. I am available for questions, as is the applicant team.
Thank you very much. Disclosures have, uh, uh, expedited communications. Chris?
I have none.
Uh, I visited the site, and I met with the neighbor above them, I can't remember the address, uh, who has the view protection, just to get a perspective from their side of what was going on. Didn't learn much of, not, didn't learn anything new that wasn't in the staff report.
None. I visited the site. I also spoke with the neighbor above. Uh, he relayed that they had a conversation with Doug Burge, with the suggestion that the whole thing could be moved to the west, southwest by some slight distance to lower the height by 3 to 5 feet, and that that would, everybody would be happy with that. That's what I heard.
I just, I'm, I also had a conversation with Anna from Doug Burge's office today to talk about one of the, the slides in the present, just to get a perspective of what the slide in the staff report meant, so nothing, nothing new.
All right, we're going to open the, uh, public hearing now. Um, I've got, um, what have I got? I've got, uh, Doug Burge as the only member of the team. Is that correct, Doug? Is it only, are you the only member of your team?
Um, I am here, and then the owner is here, and then they're here to answer questions. They're not going to be presenting.
Okay, if they want to answer questions, ask them, please, to fill out one of these speaker forms, just so that we'll have something on the record, uh, in the event that you are asked questions, that'd be very helpful. So Doug, you've got 15 minutes.
Uh, good, good evening, commissioners. I'm Doug Burge. I'm the architect for the project. This is a very interesting project, and we've been working with the city for quite a while here in trying to work out... here and trying to work out the numerous issues. It's noted here that what's an important part of the project is the fact that we had to kind of work around an original approval. Again, it started nineteen ninety-four and then it was actually enacted and started under construction around two thousand and five. And then there was a period of time, no one knows exactly when it was stopped. And so the client inherited a property that was basically a hole. And we were trying to figure out, well, as an architect, how are we supposed to design something, either eighteen feet or otherwise, when we're starting with a hole? So it took us a while to actually track down the original survey because we said, listen, we can't just, we have to just kind of ignore the hole. That was, however it happened, the guy didn't, was never meant to put it back to where it was, but nevertheless, we had to work around that. So we were able to find the original survey, which was done by a group, Mercurus, which is a surveyor, which was not surveyor record. But nevertheless, we found that and we had to get that to be approved in the city as the exact survey that was done when they approved the original house. Because that was the condition that we had to say, that was the land that was used as the basis to count the eighteen feet to measure the envelope from to start our project. So it was very critical that we had that documented by the city before we started putting pen to paper. And so we actually had that, worked it out with the city, worked it out with Bonnie, and we were able to use that survey. And they agreed that that survey was of record, it was accurate because it was approved at the time, a stamped surveyor had actually done it. So then we started the work. We knew there was PVDs in the area, we'd done multiple homes up in Seestar, not just Seestar but other areas, and we knew that being private view determinations were mostly behind this property. And we knew that we had to respect that. I told my clients early on that there was no way that we were going to be able to try to go over that because it's up to the planning director initially to determine that there would be feasible alternatives to not, hence the fallback to the eighteen-foot house. I also told our clients that not to take advantage of that, not to build a big box. There have been numerous cases within the city here that have come before you, one being Carol Byrd where there was a developer in front of her that literally blocked her entire property. And that was pretty onerous, they could not work it out. She took it all the way up to all sorts of court cases, still lost, but because the court held that Malibu has a by right use to the Malibu homeowners to fall back on the eighteen. Regardless of that ruling, we still felt our particular project, though in the way it's designed, is such that it's, it's, it's within more of that ruling and such that the, the amount of rooms that we have is really down to seven hundred and seventy square foot. It's the single guest unit or accessory dwelling unit that's above the garage. And so that was limited to the maximum section, which is the section of the house which is above the garage. So if the total square footage of the home, including the basement, was eight thousand feet, less than ten percent was allocated towards that section. That's actually a two, true two-story section over eighteen feet. The rest of the house steps down various roof heights, as you can see from the design. So the other thing that I wanted to kind of press out here and just looking through a, the presentation, is that if, some of you have been to the property, and this is a view from the neighbor's lot. I wanted to bring this up because we're talking about views and view blockage. This was a point which is off of the veranda. Now, there are numerous points off of this house. If you've been to the house, the veranda is right here on the left, the ocean views kind of form, it's all straight away. This is a view of, actually, they're doing a little remodel on their pool area. They had some damage all during the fire that they've been repairing different things in their, in their yard. And so their, the rest of the house becomes the nook and the kitchen as you go to the right. But the PVD, as you know, is taken from one location, private view determinations, five feet away at one location, that memorializes on the property. So we're basically using that point. And what we wanted to show here is that the section that we're talking about is really just right here. Now, there are rooms that they may have shown you within their property that maybe say that that's somehow, that's impeding some of their view. But as you can actually be in that house, the house has tremendous ocean views. And, but, you know, can we work out something here? There also is a wall that was put on this property, if you noticed, that was actually put on by the previous owner, not this owner of the property. And it was put in illegally. And the owner owned this property and the one down below, they had the big pit in it. And they just put this wall in here that's actually separating this property from my clients. And so they just recently worked out a deal with them so they could not take the property all the way back to the property line, it was within like twenty feet on this property. This client was unaware that that wall was there, so they just worked out a development agreement where now they have a mutual agreement where they're able to use the property, we're able to have a fire turnaround on our property, and that's all worked out. But the point on the view slide is that we wanted to keep it eighteen feet. And then we also wanted to show, very importantly, that that's the house accurately to a point that was approved by the planning commission back in nineteen ninety-four and two thousand and four. We reenacted, we found the old plans, we built that property versus the one that we're proposing is this high. And that's an eighteen-foot-high house. This was not an eighteen-foot-high house. And so I wanted to point out that, that this would, would have been built, it was under construction, there was nothing we could do about it. But it was something that would have been in the way and you would have put trees and landscaping to work around it. So we feel our project, not that we could have built that other house, we never planned on building that other house, we never would have asked to build that other house, but we feel our project is all within the workability of our property, steps down and works with the topography as much as possible. I also want to go on record saying that there was never a discussion, I would never promise anybody, hey, we can move your house two or three feet down. I gave examples throughout the city where we've worked with you as a commission to maybe work with properties, drop properties. We have a property across from our office at two-four-nine-one-one PCH where the commission was able to drop properties from a view corridor position on PCH. We could not do that here. I was giving examples of possibilities. We have a ten thousand square foot development envelope, we're pushed into there. The other thing I told our client to do is we couldn't add more square footage above the ground. So our actual house massing is actually less than six thousand square feet, it's fifty-seven hundred square feet. And that's actually in a chart that we had done where we had shown where the square footage, where is the chart? Where's the chart? Huh? It's not there? That's okay. Anyways, there's basically a chart that just basically says that we have less than six thousand square feet that's actually, that's of, the footprint of this building is fifty-seven hundred square feet. There is a basement of credit down below, about three thousand square feet. So the massing of this house, look from any neighbor, is not a ten thousand square foot house, it's not an eight thousand square foot house, that is fifty-seven hundred square feet, including the garage. And then this portion over here is where we have the only section that's two stories that's actually over the garage. So massing, square footage, looking at land use, we have this Esha here, also needs to be pointed out that the client actually had bought after the purchase of this property, this is one point seven acres, they bought the remaining twenty acres along these lines here. And so he can't develop it, but they bought it to be part of this package. So even though the, the bordering Esha is at this point, this is the only place, because this is where the road was cut before, we wanted to put it in the exact same spot, we didn't want to add on to the grading that was already done. The big pit is right there where they were building their basement. And so these little fingers here, we worked very carefully to work around them, but that's probably like less than one percent of the area that's there. The area over here was actually underneath this nook and we put the pool equipment there, so it's actually not a room that's in that space, but we're trying to not have the pool equipment on the front here. So overall, we feel this particular project, and again, I'm going to not bore you with all sorts of maps and diagrams and everything else that we've been working with. This is actually, let me just go back to this little drawing here, this was this original survey, hold on. So that was the land that was there before. It was just kind of, you know, just went down the slope like anything else. So we used that as the basis for the project. That's the hole in the ground, survey that we have right now, there's a hole right there. So we couldn't use any of this, we couldn't use any of that information, we couldn't use any of this grading to build the project from, it wouldn't be fair. So we set it up correctly, we worked with the city, we've been designing this for a couple of years. And the neighbor and the client have been working things out. This wall that we're looking at here is the one I'm talking about, they worked out a development agreement and to mutual abilities. So we're going to save some time for some questions, I'm sure there's other questions that you might have, but we feel this is a very viable project. We feel that it works both from a neighborhood character relationship because of the other surrounding houses in the area are certainly a lot bigger than ours, even far as what we're building on this area here and what's above ground. And we hope you agree with us and the client is also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Doug, you've got four minutes and thirty-three seconds for rebuttal. Next speaker, Mark Hammerschmidt.
Yes, I'm Mark Hammerschmidt, I live at six-three-five-seven Seestar, so we're the immediate south property and have the driveway abutting us to the left. We support and welcome this development. The positives of this is to eliminate an ISO that we've been staring at for twelve years. And the other positive is the fire protection that we gain by having this development done and by having the driveway completed, it finishes the development. So the enhancement for Seestar, as you come up the drive, will be a positive. The negatives for us are minor, we lose some privacy because now we have a neighbor that can see into our patio, we lose a little sliver of our canyon view, those are minor compared to the positives that we get. Our only issue is the fire mitigation for the driveway. We provided a video from our surveillance camera showing how the fire started in our area, accelerated and tried to burn my house unsuccessfully. And we've shared that video with them and they've invited to, invited us to meet with their landscaper when we get to that point to talk about mitigating that fire risk. So we support this and we hope you approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Arthur Jacobson. And is Jeff Higginbotham here? There he is, okay. Arthur, you've got four minutes.
I'm opening my time.
Got it. Yeah, I just wanted to check if you're here, you can only deal time if you're, if you're present.
Good evening, I'm Arthur Jacobson, I live at six-two-nine-five-Seestar Drive. Thank you Commissioners for allowing me to speak. My family and I moved to Malibu over eight years ago for the beauty and tranquility that makes us all residents. Over two years ago, we were sued by the developers who bought the lot at six-three-six-one-Seestar Drive. They claimed that one-third of our backyard and the retaining wall that separates us was theirs. We disagreed and filed a counterclaim. Before we went to trial, the Woolsey fire happened. Our property and neighborhood took a direct hit. We were fortunate that our house did not burn down, but most everything else within our property suffered extensive amount of damage. After being displaced from our home for six months and not having the desire to go to court, we asked our attorney to settle with the developers on the property line and the retaining wall issue. That issue has been resolved. I say this not to inhibit the developers from building a beautiful Doug Burge home, but to build it with some courtesy to us and other neighbors. Their story polls went up at the end of our settlement discussions and they partially block our primary view determination. They block both water and, white water and blue water views from all dining areas inside and out. It is a hardship. Respectfully, we believe the report mistakenly left out the blocking of white water views. Their proposed guest house is right at our current retaining wall and poses serious privacy issues. I'm not sure why they'd want to look in our backyard, directly into our backyard. The developers claim that the building is eighteen feet high. We think it is an arbitrary number as we question where that number comes from, as there's been an excavation hole on that property for over fifteen years. Mr. Burge has told us the eighteen feet comes from the original survey, some twenty years old. We do not believe the survey was included in the package. Mr. Burge also mentioned that it could be possible to move the house in an effort to diminish the obstruction by lowering the location of the house, which would call for a grading variance. I do not pretend to understand all this, but the developers have a large two-acre property with no view obstructions in front of it. We are asking them to rework this so we can all be happy. I believe there are other issues that the planning issue, commission needs to consider besides the height of the property. They are asking for variance and minor modification to reduce the distance of Esha and to reduce the required rear yard setback. We have read their hardship letter, with a two-acre lot, we disagree with the hardship. The developers will never live in six-three-six-one-Seestar, but we forever had the disruption of tearing down the current retaining wall to take over a significant area of ours and obstructing our white and blue water views, all to allow them to max out the property for resale. I want to be respectful of the Commissioners' time, I'll end my comments here. We hope there's a way to amicably, amicably resolve this issue. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who wishes, in the audience, who wishes to speak on this project? Okay, Doug, you've got four minutes and thirty-three seconds left for rebuttal.
Hi, thank you, my name's Greg Vega, this is my partner, Lindsay Galrith.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Galrith.
We are the developers. I've known Doug for thirty years and we were very, very confident that Doug was going to design a beautiful home for us to build on Seestar. And I'd like to comment on Mr. Jacobson's comment. So what happened was when we bought the property and then we had an ALTA survey done, we realized that the retaining wall was forty feet into our property and it was a very long triangle and it, it kind of dissipated into just several feet. So we approached Mr. Jacobson and his wife, Lindsay and I, and we said, we have some news for you, this is the situation. I'm not going to belabor this, but what happened was, you know, when we let them know and it was, you know, our attorney that said, look, you know, this is the situation, Lindsay and I sat down with, and said, why don't we do this? And this was after Doug and Anna kind of told us what we needed to do for a fire turnaround. Well, as it turns out, we didn't need all of the property that we owned. And I, and Lindsay and I said, why don't we do this? Let's do a win-win, we'll be good neighbors, let's split it down the middle. We only need this much for our fire turnaround, we don't need the whole thing, so we'll, we just split that, that whole area, that area down the middle. And we created a permanent landscape easement for Mr. Jacobson and his home. And we said, fine, you can have that, we'll have this because we don't need it all, we just need this for our fire turnaround. That got resolved. So as Mr. Jacobson told you, that got resolved, but that was us, you know, with an olive branch saying, look, we're going to give you some of our property and, you know, to be good neighbors because we don't need it all. I don't know who else would have done that, but we did that. And that seemed to go very nicely. So regarding, regarding the rest of the home, you know, Doug and Anna counseled us and said, let's be within the rules of the city and, and we said, great.
We never tried to go above eighteen feet, we listened to what Doug said, we've been fair and reasonable neighbors and we've tried to be very amicable with this, throughout this process. So we are developers, but we're also owners and every home is built and somebody buys it. So we're people, we've been in this process for almost over three years now and, you know, we're just here to say that we've done everything within our, our code and our rights and what everyone has told us to do without causing any kind of a ruckus, so.
One other thing, and that was when Mr. Hammerschmidt came up and he said, there's a video, you guys should see that, it's very interesting because he had, I guess it was a security camera over his patio. And where we're asking for the, you know, that variance, we own the property, the original developer had hung on, hung onto this twenty-three acres. So, so when he came to us and said, look, that's the only thing I own now, and he's a much older man, he lives out of the country, he offered it to us, so we bought it, so now we have a much larger parcel and obviously you can't build on it, it's okay. So we bought it from him. And it's interesting because that's exactly where the fire came through, right where we're kind of pushing out, where the Esha area. And we'll get the, we'll send the video to you. It's very interesting how it started and I don't know how many other people show that fire coming through, but, but Mr. Hammerschmidt's video does. And so that's- show that fire coming through, but Mr. Hammerschmidt's video does. And so that's exactly where we're pushing out a little bit. And it's our property that we're pushing into. And it's property that will never be built because it's open space, dedicated open space.
Ready to answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comment period. We'll close the public hearing back at the Commission table. Is there anybody who would like to start? Craig?
A few questions for staff, if I may. The primary view determination of the neighbors, we were just told and shown that that was, that it's at the porch, at the location where that photograph, is that accurate?
Yes, it's, I believe it's the porch. It's looking, I wish I had a picture to show you.
It's relatively to the east side of the house, though, right?
Find the picture. Parker, can I get the slideshow back up?
Doug's got a photograph there. I guess we can't really pass that around, but.
Yeah, so it's right.
This is available if anyone wants to come up and see it as well.
The scale's not very, so you'd say it's on the southwest corner of that house?
It's not on the corner. It's like right, right in the middle of this.
On the south side?
Face.
South face? Okay, so, but it's not over on the west side looking down close to the house?
No, so some of the, some of the images are taken more on the corner, on the northwest corner, and the primary view determination is taken a little bit south of where some of those pictures are, yeah.
All right. I had some confusion about the ESHA setback numbers. I think maybe one of them in the staff report was a typo where it said the proposed residence is approximately 43 feet. That was from some other project or something?
Yeah, that was a typo. Sorry about that.
Okay, and then I had one more question for staff right now. All right. Well, I have a couple of other things to mention, but that's for staff now.
Don?
Yes. On page 327, you state that the basement has two external accesses, egresses, where only one is required unless you can tell me why only one is required, two are required. There's three? Okay, so why, Doug, can you step up and tell me why there's three?
In the proposed project, we are required to, call that the exit rule for the basement. There's the interior stair and there's an exterior stair that comes out from the pool side. And because of the size of the basement, we had decided that within the back area where there's a gym that's underneath the garage, we have a light well, not a stair, but a stair and a ladder, because we felt that because of the size of the basement, we should put three in. And it's just a three-by-three light well. It's out of that one section.
So you have a three-by-three light well and then an exit out to the pool?
Correct. That's the only exteriors. That's correct.
So you have two external and one interior?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I guess it's a staff question. Maybe you can answer it. Is this part of Lot 20? Is this Lot 20? Is there some drawings of Lot 20 with a restricted area in the staff report? And I couldn't figure out what they had to do with anything.
It's only Lot 1, Lot 1.
Okay. Now, on A03?
Lot 20 is the open space lot.
Oh, okay. And that's the restricted area?
Correct.
Okay. You show a diagram of the 9,966 square foot development area. And there's two boxes outside of that area. I just wondered what those are. I don't know if you have the plans, but it's A-0.3.
Are you looking at the two boxes which represent the OWTS?
No, they say something planter on them.
They say something like a planter, right next to the purple area. And then there's one across the driveway.
Do we have an exhibit? Do you want to pull them?
Those are parts of the septic system, I believe.
The big square box by the pool?
I think that might be part of the drainage.
That's the drainage, underground drainage system.
So that's underground?
Yes, and the septic tank.
There's one that's labeled the same thing that's not shown on this map. It's down near the bottom of the gate, further down. It's also, I think it says lid planter. I don't know if that's the right word.
Yeah, the LID is also the drainage systems. Yeah, that's the state regulated drainage system.
So those aren't part of the development area? Okay. And can you, could you put up the picture of the overhead that shows the canyon, Lot 20, and the house? It's a photograph. I think it's the first part of your, very first part. No, keep going. One more. Try one more.
That's all I got.
Well, okay. How much of the grading, of the old grading is counted in the grading permit? Any of it? Does that hill go away?
Yeah, the hill would go away.
Justine, you did a calculation of cumulative grading, right?
I think so. I would need a minute to jog my memory and look all of that up.
Yeah, that was, that's my recollection.
And that was under 1,000?
Together, yeah.
Because that looks like a big giant pile.
Part of it's understructure, so it's exempt?
If you built on top of the hill, it would be.
They have listed 450 non-exempt.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that counts 94 or not?
The hump, this dirt came from the pit.
Yeah.
When they overexcavated. So I can't count that either way because I have to take it back to the original topography. So however this land gets done, obviously this is actually under the building now where that is located right now. But that used to be in the lower section, which would have been under that house or the other house. So it would have been exempt grading no matter what. I don't know what they were asking for. I do know that they had 19,000 square feet of impermeable coverage and we have half of that. So there was a lot more restrictions and things that they approved before.
Yeah, so what I figured out before was that 318 cubic yards of non-exempt grading was previously approved under that original CDP. However, there is no evidence that any of that grading took place and only this understructure grading took place.
Quick question though, wasn't that road in the foreground of the picture on the right, isn't that graded for accommodation?
Yes, so that would be, sorry, that would count as safety grading.
So it is exempt or not exempt then? Exempt.
Now, the next question would be on landscaping. The prior, the prior CDP required native landscaping. And it appears this landscaping is far from native. Are there any provisions to include restrictions, like were there going before city council next meeting? Would they be required to follow the new fire code on, you know, no palm trees, no this, no that, no the other thing?
Since that new ordinance is not in place yet, it wouldn't apply to this project.
Well, our lighting ordinance wasn't in place for probably a year before, after we started putting in restrictions. You shall follow the lighting ordinance.
As a note, we'd be willing to comply whatever those new requirements are, both for lighting and for landscape, if so be it, including the famous see-through wildlife fences that are on the perimeter.
Those are already in there, I assume.
Well, and they're going to be in there for sure, so.
Okay, now, my biggest question is if you could find an aerial view, which I think was in the first part of your presentation, going all the way to the beginning. Okay, go one, there you go. All of the, next to the green, that's your 20 acres, the side of that hill, right? The left of the green?
That's correct.
Okay. It looks like that got toasted. Is that right, that burned in the fire? Yeah, and you're proposing to put a house 14 feet from that? Is that correct? What?
Again, when you draw the ESHA line, there's the boundary of how it's selected. So Dave Crawford, the Valleys Department, working all within that with the guidelines of where the ESHA boundaries are. Now, as you know, right now, there's no line here. It's an arbitrary line, but it's an honor that we have to use for planning purposes. So what's going back or not and what we're allowed to do for fuel modification, you know, I'm all ears if we need to be working on that at all.
Well, your ESHA setback is 14 feet, 39 inches, 14.39. You're asking for a variance. Can you justify being 14 feet from?
Maybe a better question is, what other properties in the neighborhood have, you've mentioned in the staff report that others also have variances on the setback? Like what proportion of them, what distance, can you characterize that?
Well, so just to be clear, the closest part of the house and the ESHA is almost 86 feet. And so it's encroaching 14 and a half feet past that into the required 100-foot setback. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. But if you go back to...
You're saying, you're saying that it's not 14, the setback is not 14.39, it's 86?
Right. It's not 14 feet from the ESHA. It extends 14 feet into the ESHA. Does that make more sense?
The fire clearance zone extends 14 feet into the ESHA, is what you're saying.
But the house is 86. Let me just bring the ESHA up because, back to the question you, if you read the staff report, under page 17, a figure, finding three, granting the variance will not constitute a special privilege. If you read the copy, it says that the neighboring property to the east hill was also constructed with fuel modification encroachments in ESHA, although they were not as extensive as they got on this subject property. So that seems to me to be a special privilege, just when I read that.
Yeah, what would be the deprivation if you didn't get the variance? That's what I wanted to know. What are the, what other properties, how are we characterizing the ESHA setback profile of the neighboring properties?
If you look on the aerial, that brown patch is the ESHA line, the ESHA boundary. And so the, you can see the neighboring properties are close to that and here and then in it over here. Those were the neighborhood comparisons that we were making. In addition, there's not really a place where the house could be cited that would not impact ESHA as determined by the city biologists.
Well, okay, that's a separate question. But looking at the map, I see that the house of the Jacobsons, the neighbor, does look comparably close, maybe, maybe not as close. The question then might be the one a little further over to the east where it looks like it's touching the house. The question would be, is that within the reasonable neighborhood that it's relevant to the decision? Is that close enough that we would consider that in the neighborhood or is that further away? It looks like, is that access, that's also part of C-Star or is that from somewhere else? That's also part of C-Star, isn't it?
It's part of Sea View. That's Sea View Drive. It's accessed from Sea View. It's not part of the C-Star.
Oh, it's not, yeah, it's not part of the estate. So arguably, that's not one to include in the neighborhood determination of what's ESHA.
I think the analysis is a little different in a situation like this because when, if, what the LIP requires is that if you're going to intrude into ESHA, then you are limited to a 10,000 square foot development area. And the 10,000 square foot development area came about because that's what the Coastal Commission decided that they could get away with in terms of cramming people down without having a takings claim raised against them. So the variance in that kind of context is simply because if you don't allow intrusion into the ESHA in a 10,000 square foot environment, you're going to run into a takings problem. The variance is used, it's probably not the right term to use, but it is, it is to allow for the problem of what you, how do you deal with the property that you've already pushed down to 10,000 square feet and it still has to intrude into ESHA?
Well, granted, they're talking about a nominally 8222 square foot house, which is actually quite larger because the basement and the previous application had a 6,100 square foot. So the notion that it has to be as big as they've scoped it, they could have done it 10% smaller and we wouldn't be talking about this. They would have had total clean sheets.
But the difference is that they, that the 10,000 square foot limitation is the limitation that's imposed by the Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission is saying you've got a 10,000 square foot development area that you have to work within. Any house can be made smaller. You can always, you know, there is absolutely no question about that. But usually the size issue comes up when you guys are talking about neighborhood standards. And in this case, the neighborhood standard, the HOA says this is fine. Plus the fact it's an area of really large houses.
Where'd the HOA say that?
Huh?
Where'd the HOA say that?
HOA approved this design. It says that in the staff report. I don't see.
There's a letter in there from somebody who is not, doesn't live there. He's an agent. I don't know what the hell that means, but I'm just saying, there's a lady in the, there's a letter in the back.
Yeah, hi. The HOA required us to send the design to them and so we did. And what they do is they all look at it and they send it to an outside architect for the design and for the size and everything else. And they came back immediately and said, "This is fine. This is, this is for the neighborhood. This is great. We like the design."
I didn't see that. Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask Doug a question?
Go ahead. I got a couple I want to get in before you.
I keep looking that way, but you're the boss now.
Yeah, go ahead.
It seems like if the whole thing could be moved, I don't know, 10-ish feet to the west-southwest, the elevation, the height could be a little lower. You would not need the minor mod. You would not have the ESHA impact. It seems like you could solve a lot of problems if you could just nudge it a little bit. And yeah, you'd touch the edge of the steeper slope on the south side, but just barely. How difficult would that be to just kind of move the whole thing 10 feet, say?
Well, again, we're already nudged against you say that nudge. We're on the steeper slopes. We had to be like off of them. Even asking for that one section, just where the pool equipment is, is actually within the variance slope. So that's a minor modification on that.
More to the west than to the south, though. So you could sort of nudge along the top of the slope.
Exactly. But then you have, right now, we're just the area that both impermeable coverage, the size of the home where the driveway was located. We wanted to push the house as much as we can between, you have the slope on one side, obviously the ESHA on the other side, not having the house be crammed all the way into the back. You can start redesigning a lot of things, right? So yeah, there's probably a start-over plan somewhere, but it's not something that we'd be asking for. And we felt like this design, no matter what, is going to be 18 feet. And so whether it's 18 feet lower or higher, it's a section that's, that's what's part of the design. And also, just to clarify, when you mentioned the other house was a certain size, the other house actually total was about 8,200 because they had a 2,000 square foot underground parking garage, which is where that big basement came from. So, but above ground, we felt that, like I said, ours was 5,700, including the garage. So as far as amassing goes, as far as...
Can I just ask, maybe this is too candid for a public hearing, but what was the thought process in saying, "Well, you know, we're going to squeeze into the ESHA setback a little bit, 15%, and we're going to do the little minor mod. We're going to go a little bit bigger than what a clean sheets project would look like. And we're just going to hope the Commission says, 'Yeah, you're close enough.'" How does that work?
Well, I mean, it's not that we're wanting to, you love to have all those things aligned and you want to say a clean sheets project, but a lot of the clean sheet projects, they have other conditions that we have. And so we looked at it as where we have it, where the line itself, the owners own that other property, even though it's open space, and whether or not that's going to help or not. I mean, you have this kind of law... I mean, you have this kind of line that's in the sand right there, and that line is ambiguous, but I'm just saying, back to your point, yeah, you could design as certain things, it just looked at the impact overall, and the impact, there were examples where other properties were, were coming into that, and again, we're, we're talking about a minor amount of space, that's just where we created on the design. And so the fact that we told the client we couldn't do two stories, that we wanted to keep it all under one, we were working within the 10,000 square foot development umbrella, and that's something that's been accepted by the city, and something that we worked all along to not asking for one inch more than that, and that's never something that we've asked for. So, yeah, there might be another design, but that's not the design that's before us.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I guess I would just observe, observe that, yeah, you have the 10,000 envelope, but you have those other codes that apply too, and you have to work with them all, and you don't, you don't just automatically get the 10K.
Okay, just, let me do a couple, okay? Justine, that, the, the graph that you showed regarding the, the grade, okay, the old grade or the new grade, can you, can you just bring it up and tell me what that says?
So, this is mostly to illustrate that the proposed residence is taking advantage of the excavation that's already been done. And so this is the hole that's there now, and this is the dirt that came out of that hole.
Right.
The blue is the grade that was there previously, and then the green is the grade that they're proposing at the end of the day.
That was done when? That's from a survey that was done when?
I would assume that this is using the survey that was done in 1997. But this exact image comes from the geotechnical report.
Right, so if you're taking, as you know, the 18-foot points, if you take the blue line, and you drew another blue line 18 feet above that, that's the most you could ever build under 18 feet. And then we worked with the grade of the fire department to bring the driveway down, and so we lowered the section where the actual garage is in the driveway, so it's actually above grade, that whole portion of the house is only about 14 feet high in our proposed, because we dropped the property down at this point where the motor court is, because we needed to have a 2% at the motor court. And so our, our building, 18 feet is measured from here, not from here, could have been measured from here, because that's your allowed 18 feet above that blue line, but it's where the natural or the finished grade is, natural is here, or against the original natural. And then the finished grade is lower, if you go higher, you can't go another 18 feet, as you guys know. So we went lower at that back garage section, so the actual section where the garage is, it's actually about 13 feet from the dirt where it used to be before, and that's how high that piece is, because we went about five feet below, because that's where the driveway is.
Yeah, I mean, look, my basic, when I went to the house, Mr. Jacobson's house, and looked down, I mean, a couple things hit me right away. One, you know, you got those story poles sitting right up against his property, all right? And I was sort of, you know, I, two thoughts came to me, one that said, you're building the house, but you're not going to live there. And it's sort of, if the, you know, neighbors typically try and work stuff out to make, okay? And I think part of the problem is, this is gonna be a spec house, because if you go back even last week, we had, who was it, Josh Brolin, had a house, the neighbor complained, and he went back and reduced the size of the house to deal with the, the neighbor's concerns. And I don't think reducing houses anywhere near architectural toolkit, but that's okay. But I do think, I do have a problem with the fact that I got these story poles, the back end of the house sitting right next to his, and you wanted another variance on top of that to...
Can I clarify, can I clarify that one point? Because that wall, where that is, is being moved back, that wall doesn't exist anymore. The property line, as you know, was actually...
I know, but I'm just saying, those, that back end is, is really very close to where they're, you know, when you look out, it looks like it's, you're sitting right on top of it, and then you want a variance on top of that, which I just, I don't particularly, I'm not really fond of that. We talked about the fact that the variance for the ESHA, they are getting a, a benefit, a privilege, because their encroachment is larger than anybody else you've identified in the, in the staff report. There was, on page 15, there was supposed to be an ER, environmental review board finding, and apparently you guys passed on that, so you don't have to do that?
The code allows an exemption when...
Excuse me?
The, the LCP allows an exemption from ERB review when the house is cited in the same location as a previously approved CDP, so that's the reason.
Yeah, the prior house is like a 5,000 square foot house, two stories, this is an 8,000 square foot single, I'm just saying, I...
Well, the footprint is the same, is the same size, it's 5,000 and some footprint, so it was, that was the reason.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't see the, that explanation in the, I explained why it's not feasible to take the recommended action, okay? There's nothing in there, the, the staff report doesn't say anything about an exception. If, if we can get some idea... I got one, just one or two more. Justine, at some point in here, you talk about, page 14.
Sorry, Commissioner Uring, it's page, on page 15, finding four is the finding that talks about whether ERB, that section that cited, 4.4.4D.
And, and on page, well, have you, you got me, page 14, proposed project, it's the same old story that says, you know, it's the least environmentally damaging alternative. And, you know, he's, he's maxed out the TDSF on this as he could, but you make some statements in there regarding, it is, it's such, it is not anticipated that a smaller or relocated project would be substantially environmentally superior alternative. When you reach that conclusion, what, what size house did you compare that to that allowed you to get to that conclusion? Below that, you also say, such it is not anticipated that a smaller relocated residence would be an environmentally superior alternative. And I guess you gotta, you gotta compare it against something to come up with that conclusion, I would think.
It's, it's kind of a generalized analysis and...
Well, let's cheat, I could see what her answer is, and we'll come back. I understand what, generalize, but I mean...
Believe it or not, I have a hand in writing some of this stuff.
Okay, but, but it says in here that, you know, it's not anticip, I mean, you give me a professional opinion, but you don't give me any substance as to how you reach that opinion, which I, I think we deserve.
Well, I mean, in this case, there's an existing prepared pad, and so whether the house was bigger or smaller, if you cited in this location, it's not going to be significantly different in terms of impacts, environmental impacts. There's no way to avoid the fuel modification encroaching into ESHA because of the, the location of the lot relative to the ESHA, so those are the kinds of things that were part of that consideration.
Okay, but still don't...
Problem with the approach, you're gonna end up with an awful lot of 800 square foot houses, because a smaller house is always going to be less environmentally...
Well, it's, look, I mean, the problem is, you know, this is a Doug Burge project, he took eight pounds of potatoes and tried to fit them in a four-pound bag, all right? I mean, that, and you, you sit down and you say that one, from the neighbor's perspective, I mean, I've got a variance, or, you know, for the setback, which, if you put it back, you know, you didn't have that variance, it may make that neighbor's view a little bit better.
But you know the view is unprotected.
I understand that, I, I understand, but I'm just saying, you know, again, like, if it was a neighbor, neighbors might have been able to work that out and say, you know, we'll do something to protect that, that view for you from, from the backyard. Didn't happen in this case.
I'd like to make a question.
Would a smaller house enable them to do that? I don't know.
I haven't spoken at all yet.
Go right ahead.
Sorry. If you could bring up slide, I think 13 in your presentation, for a minute, I just wanted to talk about, just the layperson perspective. So, there's, there's specific, you know, code that talks to exactly how we look at a hillside, and, you know, it's got a specific calculation, et cetera. When I see that much red, you know, that's 100% slope, we got a bunch of 30s, 25s in there. How, like, just, if somebody can talk me down from any concerns that this is not a 25% slope, and that per the city calculation, therefore not subject to hillside limitations?
The hillside ordinance pertains to the developed area, so the area where the development is cited would need to be an average slope of, what is it, 33%?
I believe it's the whole lot, especially for the erosive soil conditions, sections of the code, from what I read. So that, that's just, that got me concerned that, yeah, where grading is contemplated, but I thought it was the entire lot, so if somebody can just help clarify that way, we don't need to run the calc.
I'd have to look up that section of the code to understand exactly what you're referring to. Do you have the code number?
Yeah, sorry, it's...
I think Richard's looking it up.
Yeah, it looked like he was focused on that. So section 16, not too far to 040, has the actual calculation, and then the, the section talking about the hillside, I think it went after the hillside definition, where it was focused on the erosive soil conditions, which is the section I thought was relevant.
While Richard's looking that up, do you have another question that you want to talk about?
Let me double check, well, just, just kind of aligning with what some of the other conversations been, it does feel like we're, we're doing everything we possibly can to push modifications to allow them maximum square foot, when it's just a logical question to really keep where, you know, keep within the neighborhood character, et cetera, when we're constantly pushing every single variance we can to make it fit. Let's just make it a little smaller and not have all these variances, and then we know we, we're better served. So that, that's, that's just an observation and everything I'm, I'm reading here as well.
Question? I have a que, a safety question, and that is, I look at the biological study, page five and page one, and I look at your ESHA map, and they don't jive. Biological study on page five has a green area at the top that is exactly like your ESHA area, and then that follows all the way down the driveway, and that's, I got bad eyes, but California coastal sage, which is ESHA. And then I look at page one, and you can see virtually the whole lot is surrounded on the west side by California coastal sage. So we had a demonstration that it all burned, and I don't know how you did your table, but it sounds, it sounds to me like it's 14 feet away from that, with the driveway. So how safe is this house next time it burns down that canyon?
Having the ability to count to three, I'm gonna suggest that somebody start to put together a motions, given the fact that it's 11:30 in the evening and we can talk about this all night long.
And, so, I, I, in order for me to give a variance, 14 feet from ESHA, I'm gonna need some safety factor here, maybe a, maybe a firewall like we used to require all the time? But if you look at these diagrams, which are right in their report, their biological report, this thing's a fire trap, and we're giving it a variance to put it right next to the fire.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to deny, based on the need for the ESHA variance and the minor mod are not justified.
The staff to bring back a resolution denying the project based upon the fact that the findings regarding the minor modification, minor modification, minor modification, huh? And, and, and the, and the variance for ESHA are not, cannot be made, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
They're second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just would like to know if, if, if we can get an answer on that 25%.
The hillside development definition, it reads, hillside residential development means a residential development occurring on a parcel of land on the inland side of Pacific Coast Highway on a proposed development area on slopes over 30%, and which will result in grading on slopes over 30% as calculated on the slope analysis using 10-foot contours. So it, unless there's something different, when we wrote the hillside ordinance, it was designed to encourage you to get off of slopes. So if you had a property with a flat area and a slope, we looked for some way to penalize you if you were to develop on that slope to take advantage of a view or something like that. And so what they're doing here is exactly what the ordinance was trying to accomplish, which was get them off of the slopy part, even though that's a manufactured slope that has no bearing, a slope's a slope, and stick them on the flat part, and that's what they've done. They have no grading or structures, I mean, maybe a portion of the structure...
It's part of the variance.
No.
Oh, I, I thought the variance was...
Separate of the variance, just talking about the location of the building, the way it is right now, there's just a, I think, a little bit of the building cuts into the hill, but...
The pool equipment?
The pool equipment, but that doesn't trigger the hillside development requirements, because if you averaged out their area of where they're doing work, it's not on a slope over 30%. If you move the house, you are gonna trigger hillside development if you get on that slope.
What, what then is...
That was the intention of the law.
Wait, wait, there's, there's a, the code section that says you take the average slope for the whole lot, and that determines the available TDSF. If it's above a certain angle, then you reduce the TDSF accordingly.
I don't think that ever passed.
You're talking about the slope density ordinance, if you're creating, but that's for when you're creating a subdivision.
Oh, okay, that's right, you're right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, usually, usually as a courtesy, we ask the applicant if they want a continuance to correct.
That is occasionally the case, that we ask the applicant whether they would like to have the matter continued so that they can redesign the project, or in order to meet some of the objections. The alternative, of course, is denial, and denial means that you have to appeal up to the planning, yeah, there you go.
City council, you have the planning.
Yeah, city council. And so is there, is there any suggestion, Doug, that you would like a continuance of this matter?
We would like a continuance.
You would like?
Yes.
All right. Would you like a continuance to a date certain, or would you like a date, to a date uncertain?
Uncertain.
Uncertain, all right. I will make the motion, continue the item to a date uncertain.
I'll second that.
Does he have to drop his motion first?
What?
Does he have to drop his motion first?
Yeah, he does.
I'll drop it.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the motion is now to continue the matter to a date uncertain. We keep this up, we're gonna, I think we're doing pretty good about continuing matters.
We're being nice, guys.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move adjourned.
Were there any opposed?
Is there any opposed? There are no opposed. Motion for adjournment, is it seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Flo, could you all please come forward?